Want to call the April, oh, we're on month, wrong month. Want to call the May 16th, 2019 meeting of the Fairytale Municipal Planning Commission to order. We'll start tonight with Citizens Forum. Anybody on the Planning Commission have any questions or comments? Mark, do we have any training lined up?
Not that I'm aware of right now. I would make a comment about the agenda for tonight. If anybody has an agenda, on the back, there are some public comment protocol. If you could just please look over that and make sure if you come up and speak that you do follow that protocol and be considerate. I know everybody's got opinions about things, but we still have to be civil and respectful. So if you would please do that, we would appreciate it. And if anyone does want to speak that's not an applicant, I would need a blue card filled out and bring it down to me. They're out at the, with the agendas out front.
Do we have a computer screen tonight?
I'm sorry, what?
Computer screen.
Are they not turned on?
No.
No, we're off. Okay, well, we'll turn them on. I think you turn them on right underneath.
Okay.
Yep, right there, that first button you come to.
Since we have several people here who may want to speak, we're going to limit our comments to five minutes, please, and we have countdown on the screen, don't we, Mark?
Please?
We have a scout troop with us tonight. Will somebody with the troop come up and tell us your troop number? At the microphone over here. Troop number and what badges are being worked on tonight?
Good-looking group.
Microphone. Just tell us who you are and the troop number and how many boys you have and what they're working on.
Well, that's a lot of questions. My name is James Cole. I'm Assistant Troop Master with Troop 444 from Fairytale Presbyterian Church here in town. And we're here tonight with the Falcon Patrol. These are mostly first-year scouts, and they are working on their citizenship and the community badge. So they're actually supposed to pay attention to this meeting and listen to the issues and take notes and be able to make discussions and reports about this later.
Okay, thank you. Welcome. Approval of the agenda?
I don't have any changes recommended, no.
Second.
Wait, I have one.
Nope.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. I have a correction.
On the minutes or the agenda?
Yeah, the, oh, you said the agenda. Excuse me. I'm on, up to the minutes. Have a, in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, approval of the minutes for the April 18th, 2019 meeting. I have a correction, Madam Chairman, on page three. A minor one, but nevertheless, a correction on the motion, third motion on that page under item three there. It should be motion was seconded by commissioner instead of commission.
Commissioner.
I'm not the commission.
Yep, spell check wouldn't have caught that one either, sorry.
That's all.
Yeah, I got that.
Any other corrections or changes?
Motion for approval.
Second.
All of you in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Item number four, discussion in public hearing on a final plat for the re-subdivision of Lot 1R1 and part of Lot 3R1, parcel 069 and 069.01, tax map 143, Kingston Pike and Fairytale Commons Boulevard, 5.79 acres, Zone O-1 and C-1, Site Incorporated, Annette Homel, applicant.
This is a plat that would plat the public right-of-way for Village Commons Boulevard. It used to be North Peterson Road, but they changed it to reflect the name of the senior living community that's constructed to the north. And so they, this plat would establish that right-of-way and current easements out there. There's a walking trail along the east side of Village Commons Boulevard up to a point into the development, and then it will be extended to connect to the walking trail that goes into Baldwin Park. They are also with this plat reconfiguring some of the property lines, and basically the developer of the villages has purchased the land to the west of Village Commons Boulevard, and they're making that area part of their development. And that would allow them to put a sign down by Kingston Pike since it would be on-premise. So that's what this plat, the purpose of this plat, there will have to be another plat toward the end of the project to plat additional easements that will result from the development of Village Commons community. So this is just kind of a phase one plat for now, so that they can go ahead and try to get their sign installed down by Kingston Pike. There's a few comments left on the plat, but they're, we've discussed them with the applicant, and they're fine with all these comments. They're easy to address. A lot of them are just administrative or clarifications, and the staff recommends approval subject to these 13 items being addressed.
Mark, is that area right at the road a drainage area or a?
Yeah, it's a detention basin.
Detention basin? What's going to be done with that? Is it still going to be left like that?
For now, it's designed as a detention basin. They could always change it, you know, like they did on Parkside Drive with some of those areas, but it's designed right now for stormwater because it is kind of the low spot in development. Everything runs ultimately down to that point.
So putting a sign in that area is not going to mess that up?
No, they would be able to put it outside of the, of that easement area. They should have space.
Am I understanding correctly that all of that to the west of Village Commons Boulevard was a separate deed from the original purchase of?
Yeah, it was.
Was?
Yeah.
Okay, and so their intention is to sell lots then along that?
I'm not sure what their intention is. I know at this point, the developer of Village Commons has apparently purchased that land and is including it in his development.
This is Good Works Unlimited?
Yeah. But he may, he very well could have some development on portions of that where it's, he can meet the physical requirements, but at this point, I don't know of any plans that he has for that area.
But he has got it already segregated into lots, right?
Well, on that west side, all those lot lines are going away, so it's going to be actually combined with the rest of Village Commons.
Was this property not owned by Doug Horn also?
Yes.
It was?
It was. But now they're plating the right-of-way through there for Village Commons Boulevard, so it bisects those properties. And so the properties on the west side are now part of Good Works property. On the east side, it's still going to be Mr. Horn's for now.
Still Horn's?
Yep.
Where the Fairytale Press is and all that?
Yes, right, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Question on number two. Is there any problem with addressing the compliance with the comment number two about the open space, a minimum 10%? Is there?
No, I've talked with the engineer for this project and Annette Homel, and since they're going to be combining the rest of the Good Works property, there's a fairly large open space area there that's just south of Baldwin Park. It's tree-covered, and that should put them well over the 10%, so they shouldn't have any issue with that. They'll have to verify that, but yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Were you pleased, and you're all right with all the subject twos?
Yes.
Is this really a conditional approval? Because it stated that it would be revisited later.
Well, I mean, this plat will have to be approved separately. They'll have to, when they, it could be months from now, they'll have to plat other easements that, because the infrastructure hasn't been installed yet in other portions of the development. So, you know, those easements have to reflect the as-constructed locations of different things, like the, there's a, there's going to be a joint public access easement that would extend north of Village Commons Boulevard. Only this portion here of Village Commons Boulevard will be a public street. Rest of it will be a public access easement.
Answer your question, okay. Anybody else?
Move for approval of the request based on the 13 stipulations.
Second. Oppose in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Number five, discussion in public hearing on fiber installations along the west side of South Campbell Station Road from Kingston Pike to Municipal Center Drive and along the south side of Municipal Center Drive to Park Place Boulevard, TDS Telecom applicant.
This is a project by the same contractor that is putting in fiber along Jamestown Boulevard. It came before you all a few months ago to service the community center. This particular extension would service the Fairytale Gateway Project on the corner and then any development that may occur east of the post office and in other portions of this general area. As proposed, they're placing the fiber on the east side of South Campbell Station, or west side of South Campbell Station Road, and then the south side of Municipal Center Drive, all within the right-of-way. They will have to obtain a right-of-way permit and, you know, meet the conditions that they were held to with other similar projects, making sure that they don't disturb the sidewalks that are in this area, and then that they restore the areas back to their previous, you know, grass cover. So the staff does recommend approval of this project subject to the six remaining comments at your places. And if you all have any questions, I think a representative from the applicant is here. All this project will be bored, and it's generally to a minimum depth of 36 inches. And so it shouldn't really cause any, very minimal surface disruption and soil disturbances, but they, you know, it should be a relatively low-impact project. They just need to make sure they coordinate it with all the.
The post office or the town access?
And I'm actually here now.
Okay.
Oh, you're there.
Come up to the microphone, please. Be will tell us who you are and give an address.
Yep, my name is Tyler Martin. I'm with TDS Telecom, and I am in the Route Acquisition Department. I work in between the Engineering and Construction Group, and our address is at 10201 Upper Ridgeway in Knoxville.
Thank you.
I have just a question of concern. We had, I don't remember what utilities they were, and quite frankly, we've had a few different ones come through recently, and one of them ripped up in front of where the community center is. That was an ever-lovin' mess, and in front of the, I guess you can't really mess up in front of the gas station, but that was.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
They really made, whatever that, whoever that was, that was a mess, and I'm not sure. I'd really like to see that again, so.
Tyler can speak to that, but I think that project was, most of what you saw there, I believe, was KUB.
Okay.
Yeah.
Were they digging trenches, or were they?
They were doing both. They were doing directional bores, and then anytime they had a junction, they were going to have to, they had to open dig that.
They had to bring it up.
We had a couple, we had a contractor that we had never dealt with that we actually required to post a letter of credit, and their work may be finished by now. They may not be the culprit. It may have been of KUB that is the one that made more of the mess.
I think KUB made more of the mess. The other one was a contractor with Verizon, and they did that fiber project along the north side of Kingston Pike from Costco.
Was KUB working there too? There's a big spot where there's, just, they just filled it in with stone.
KUB was mostly in the Campbell Station Road-Kingston Pike area. Right now, KUB's working out on Turkey Creek Road and Boyd Station. So if you all see any activity out there, that's what's going on. That's KUB.
I guess what I want is assurances that if, that you're not just, if you're, if things are getting ripped up, you're not just filling it in with stone and leaving it, I mean, it was in a ditch area, but still, there's no growing grass in it.
We just want to put back the way you found it.
Right, and yeah, our group, we utilize Star Construction primarily for our master contract work, and they'll be doing this, performing this work here as well. And they've been in this area for years, and anytime we've had any issues, we can have them go out and fix it, but they pretty well know, Ralph Skates is the supervisor for them, and they pretty well know how things go in this area, and to make it, put it back like you found it, basically. So, you know, with the grass and everything, they try to keep all that nice and neat, and we try our best to, you know, our goal is to really not even know we've been there at the end of the day, is to get the.
I can assure you.
Yeah, yeah.
So you all are okay too with the boring?
You see that better?
I will, I think they called it out as the, I think they called it out for direct buried, but I will run that by the engineer because we've had to do that in the past.
Well, you're right next to a sidewalk. Your east-west section along Municipal Center is right next to a sidewalk, and that's going to be real hard. You've got a bank on one side, on the south side, it's going to be real hard to try to open bury that.
Mm-hmm.
Of course, it's going to be hard to set your boring rig up there too as well.
Right, and where they have to make those bore shots, a lot of times, I mean, we call it out as a directional, or direct buried, but the contractor will end up just setting up a boring rig and boring those, both those shots the whole way because they have to bore under the road there at a, that side street, I don't remember the name of it, but where.
Park Place Boulevard?
Yes, so we would have to, you know, they'd have to bore that anyhow. So a lot of times, they'll just go ahead and set up. But I will run that, I will make sure.
Just make sure because that's a condition of the approval of this, you have to.
Correct, yeah, and I will let them know for sure that.
We don't want any open trenches out there.
Right.
That's number one on the list.
Yeah, so I would, yeah, if that's an issue, then I would definitely come back to.
How many feet are your, like, your pull boxes spaced? I mean, how, I mean, how far can you do a directional bore before you gotta do an open, open dig and put a pull box in?
We could make that whole shot. I mean, it's a.
Oh, you can?
Yeah, they should be able, because I think we're trying.
Which probably adds a pedestal for the town hall, and you're, I mean, there's probably going to be some pedestals through there, I assume.
Right, and typically, I guess, it's like, we'll use the 250 feet, kind of like how the span of power. It really just depends on who all we can serve right there. So we don't have to have a pull box or a pedestal if there's nobody there, but like, yes, you're correct. So right there at the, I would imagine we would stop at that road there and then start again because it could hit the customers coming in that way there.
That's usually the only opportunity to make a mess. We just, we just ask you, you know, and Star is a reputable company, they're local, they've been around. They're not an out-of-state contractor coming in just to do this job. I'm familiar with Star and Ralph, and they do a nice job, and they care about the reputation.
Yeah, and like I say, if we ever have any issues, you can feel free to reach out to any of us, and we get with Ralph, and those guys are in the Knoxville area. They're our master contractor, so it's not like they're a sub or anything like that that gets to get out of here if they make a mess or tear something up.
You can hold their feet to the fire.
Yes, correct.
Any other questions or comments?
None.
And you all agree to the six stipulations here?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number six, discussion in public hearing on a preliminary road design plan for improvement to Union Road, Town of Fairytale applicant. Can you put up our time?
I've got it right here. The old-fashioned way.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm Darrell Smith, Town Engineer. This is a continuation of the discussion we had last month's meeting about Union Road. I think at that, that meeting, we described how it is staff's responsibility, anytime we develop a project like this, particularly a roadway project, to develop it in such a way that we meet all of the town's requirements, all of the town's policies, all of Ashdo's requirements, all of TDOT's requirements. At the same time, we have to look at the impact a project like this creates on the adjacent properties. I feel like we've done a pretty good job of addressing everything, so the plans that were in your packet have not been revised at this point. There is one exception we're going to have to consider, and I'd like for you guys to consider that tonight and give us some guidance. You'll recall, we talked about the locations where we were trying to move the shared-use path to the back of the curb in order to just make it, everything as narrow as we can. We did get clarification from TDOT that we're going to have to maintain a minimum five-foot lateral clearance between the edge of the traveled way and the edge of the shared-use path. Curb and gutter is included in that. Curb and gutter is two and a half feet wide.
That's a two-and-a-half-foot grass strip, is what.
So what it comes down to is TDOT's minimum grass strip width would be two and a half I would ask you tonight to consider, TDOT's minimum is two and a half feet, your minimum that you guys set is six feet. This project, our intention is to have an eight-foot grass strip with trees. Eight feet will do better for street trees than six feet, but to select one of those in the areas where it is confined. Now, another thing that you requested at the last meeting were renderings. You wanted to see what it looks like, and at that time, you were talking about a three-foot grass strip versus an eight-foot grass strip with trees. We provided this tonight, I think it was in your packets as well. This is, is that the first one there?
Yeah.
That is an eight-foot grass strip between the curb and gutter and the edge of the shared-use path with street trees. Now, we showed the street trees fairly small because that's about what they'll look like early on. Of course, they will mature. This is a view from the side. You can see the trees, as they mature, will provide a pretty good buffer between the roadway and the adjacent properties. The next rendering, this is an aerial view of the eight-foot grass strip with trees, just looking to the west. It's kind of a generic scene, I can't tell you exactly where that is. We're assuming that when the Ivy Farm develops, that'll be the, it will look kind of like that, there'll be a subdivision there. You can see it does provide a reasonable break between the 10-foot shared-use path and the travel lanes. The next slide, this is a three-foot grass strip. It's not an awful lot of difference, but you really can't put street trees in there, and if you've been on Everett Road, that's what it looks like. That's, those are three-foot grass strips. So with, with all of that being said, I feel like we have addressed everything we can on this. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plans as presented, subject to the minimum width of grass strip that you'll select tonight.
Darrell, what about some of the areas that we talked about that would, we felt like the TDOT would allow us to squeeze and go ahead and put the multi-use path up against the curb? You're saying that, that's a deal breaker now for TDOT?
I think that's a deal breaker, yes.
So they don't, they don't even give us the, in certain small areas under certain scenarios and hardships, you're saying that those are not even permissible?
Probably not.
You would need a barrier.
It would need a barrier.
That would require a barrier.
And a barrier takes up two and a half feet of space, so that's not going to happen. That's not, nobody wants that.
Okay. I just, I wanted to clarify, because those are some things we talked about last month.
Please define barrier.
Like a guardrail?
Guardrail would be a barrier.
Is that what they've come up with for, have they given any, I know these are.
I think with bicycles, I think with bicycles, they may be looking for a concrete barrier, like a Jersey barrier.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to hit the back of a guardrail with all the little posts.
I'd much rather hit concrete.
I'd rather hit a concrete barrier.
I'd rather hit the car.
Not only the one, but.
Thank you.
Anybody else on the Planning Commission have any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Darrell, before you leave, I do have one more question. I asked the same question last month, but I want to hear again, maybe I can ask it again because I've been out there to the properties, driven by several times now after you answered me last month, and want some, a little bit more clarification. We all know that there's one owner on that road that has about, as I calculated it, about 26% of the frontage.
Right, that's the trout residence, yes.
On the north side, okay. And your answer last month, as I recall, was that if you tried to push the road to the south any, that would almost be prohibitive in cost, in the grading.
I feel like it is. Not so much the grading as the fact that driveways would be very difficult to tie in. What we have designed at this point, driveways are very steep on the south side because the, they go up from the roadway. I think we have, I don't know, two or three 15% driveways. I think there was one that was 16 and a half percent. That's a six-to-one slope. Getting any steeper than that, you get steep fast, and you find yourself buying properties if you can't tie the driveway down properly.
Okay. Now, on the north side then, left as it is, whether it be three feet or eight feet or whatever, grass strip, it looks like you're going to have a slope down.
That's correct.
To the trout's property.
That's correct.
Yeah, so how are you going to?
There's, there's a little more room to tie those down.
It's going to run down to their driveway, it looks like. They've got a circular driveway in the front of their house, you know?
Right. There's a little more room to tie those in.
Pardon?
There's, there's a little more room to tie those in.
Okay.
It's still not going to be, you know, particularly easy, but easier than on the opposite side of the road. And the intention of the alignment is to use the existing right-of-way that is there now, as opposed to shifting it farther to the, to the south and ignoring the existing right-of-way that is there now.
What is that existing right-of-way?
It's 30 feet on the north side, 30 feet from the middle of the road. I want to say on the south side, I'm sure it varies, but it's probably something like 20 feet from the center of the road.
But it was different, I'm not familiar.
When Saddle Ridge subdivision was developed, it's my understanding, the whole farm was one piece of property, and in subdividing that property, it was required to dedicate right-of-way for future roadway improvements. It's just like any other subdivision. When Fox Run was developed, they dedicated 30 feet of right-of-way along Union Road. Same thing.
The trout property's not in that subdivision, is it?
It's actually a lot in the subdivision, and it doesn't matter if it was 10 acres that you cut into two five-acre parcels. By subdividing that parcel, you would still be responsible to dedicate right-of-way based on the classification of the roadway.
Okay, I guess I misunderstood. I didn't think that lot was part of that subdivision at all. I thought it might, it was subject to.
It's actually a numbered lot, as I understand.
As I recall, subject to the covenant. As I recall, subject to the covenants. If, in the event it was ever subdivided or sold, it would be subject to those covenants, that was an agreement. But I didn't understand that it was part of that subdivision.
Maybe two definitions that you're both dealing with. Roseanne may be talking about more of an HOA and a covenants and restrictions style of being part of the subdivision. And Darrell's talking about more of the plat.
Correct. Just the plating process. By adding or subtracting a property line, it is a requirement to dedicate right-of-way if you haven't already.
You're saying, so on the north side, then the Trouts would have been required to dedicate what used to be a 20-foot right-of-way measured from the center line to a 30-foot right-of-way measured from the center line, roughly?
Probably 15 to 20 feet. On some of the farms that have been there, parcels that have been undeveloped.
Probably some of those old farms used to go to the middle of the road.
Oh, yeah.
There was a right-of-way back in the old days.
We currently show the Swan property goes to the middle of the road. That's debatable among surveyors. In my opinion, the minimum right-of-way is what the municipality maintains. In this case, it would be the back of the ditch, which can be 15 feet on this road, 15 feet from center line.
Well, just for my information, which came first here, the chicken or the egg? What's that? I don't know how many acres are there with the Trout property, that lot that purportedly... That has the big frontage on Union Road. Was that conveyed to the Trouts before that subdivision was platted?
I don't know.
Part of the same plat?
If it was, I think it was part of the same...
I think Mrs. Trout's family owned that farm.
The Trouts are here tonight, she can answer that in a moment.
So I think it was part of her family farm.
Yeah, that's my... And please...
Well, we will, I mean, we'll be happy to, but we will need you to come up to the microphone and get you on the record.
Well, I understand where this town stands.
The right-of-way there is what I'm trying to get, is it a total of a 60-foot right-of-way right now? Or is a 40-foot right-of-way? Or is it a hybrid because one homeowner has, one property owner has dedicated right-of-way and the other hasn't dedicated right-of-way?
That's what we see right now. And there are some parcels where maybe they've cut off, maybe it's been five acres and they cut it into two or three parcels, put two houses on it, dedication of right-of-way. And at different times, it may be that when, some of them, when they were done, Knox County, before the town was here, Knox County required a 25-foot right-of-way along that road.
Based upon the road classification, what should that right-of-way, what would the ideal width of that right-of-way be?
Ideal is 60 feet total, 30 feet each side of the middle of the road.
And it is important to point out that we call it measuring to the center of the road, but that doesn't necessarily mean measure to the center of the asphalt.
No. It can vary a little bit. To really narrow it down, you really have to have a surveyor out there go out and find the original, some of the original pins and...
Well, I think it's important to point out that one of the directives that we asked you a long time ago in this process is, hey, let's minimize the amount of right-of-way acquisition in this and try to stay out of people's private property and stay in the existing right-of-way. And I think that's important as we're talking about this, is that I think the staff and the designers have done a really good job of designing this within the existing right-of-way. Now, of course, there may be some debate on where the right-of-way is, but nevertheless, I applaud you in doing that.
Well, thank you.
Do you have any questions?
No.
I have a question about whether we come with the six or the eight. What does that do to the right-of-way? Or we have to push the right-of-way?
I guess what she's saying, would we have to acquire more right-of-way if we go with the eight-foot grass strip?
On most tracts, right now, what we're showing is the eight-foot grass strip. In some of the confined areas, okay, across the Trouts property, a six-foot grass strip consistently across would be able to, we would not have to acquire fee simple right-of-way. We're still going to have to acquire easements, slope and construction easements. But...
And with the construction easement, after the construction is finished, that reverts back?
Yes, that still is owned by the property owner, yes.
It is important to point out, based upon your comment earlier, that this area that's shown on the screen as highlighted actually would not, we have an error in showing this. Is that a fair statement?
That is a very fair statement, that's why I wanted to...
The reason being is I don't want to mislead the public in what we're looking at tonight. So we may not have the latest and greatest updated plans.
Well, these are... We just didn't update them once we found out the clarification because I didn't want to update them with...
Well, until we know what...
Until we know what you want.
What direction we're going to send you. Right.
As far as the grass strip is concerned, yes.
Got it.
Anybody else on the Planning Commission have any questions or comments?
And that path is as narrow as it can be?
Yes.
To satisfy TDOT requirements?
That's correct. It is a shared-use path for bicyclists and pedestrians.
Does it have to be there?
Well, our commitment to the town, your own policy, is for complete streets. And our commitment to TPO is to consider multimodal, to have bike and pedestrian facilities. By going with this 10-foot path, shared-use path, we were able to eliminate two four-foot bike lanes. So it shrunk, shrank the footprint quite a bit by being able to do this.
Anybody else? Thank you, Darrell.
Thanks.
Thanks, Darrell.
Darrell.
I'm going to do a, well, I'd like to say a quick presentation, but I realized last month when we were going through this that this process has gone on for quite some time. We've been at it since we approved the contract in 2016. So we've been talking a lot about, and people have come in and out of the process. So I really wanted to get you guys up to date on some certain federal laws that are going on and a few other things. So I keep forgetting that I have this. So I'm going to hit the discussion items that I'm going to hit tonight. Is Union Road, I'm going to go through a history. I'm going to talk about transportation policy, our changing demographics, our Union Road timeline. And I'm going to hit some miscellaneous information. I'm actually going to try and dig into the traffic study a little bit. And I hope that I don't confuse everyone because I'm still, I barely have a grip on it as it is. So first off, Union Road history. This is from KGIS. This is Union Road circa 1959. It was a local road that served some farms and some houses. Don't believe that it was actually installed with any kind of engineering design. Just it served the purposes of those, as a local road for those properties that fronted it. This is Union Road today. It's clearly a suburban collector with a lot of subdivisions feeding out to it on the north end. And still a few pieces of undeveloped property that are currently in the process of being developed. That's the future. We have Ivy Farms, which has been, was rezoned in July of 2018. I'm sorry, I'm reading off of that. R-1 OSR, which is a very appropriate zone considering it's surrounded by subdivisions on both sides. They are proposing 214 dwelling units, which comes to 1.98 dwelling units per acre. They actually could have 20 more dwelling units on that property, but that's, they've landed on 214 dwelling units. Swan Farm, which also rezoned in 2018, is neighborhood convenience commercial. The commercial fronts Kingston Pike, where it has restricted building sizes. And the rear of it, the residential fronts Union Road, there were 34 units over on 7.16 acres, and that's 4.75 dwelling units an acre. That development is really, considering what we've had proposed in the past, at some, at one point, we had commercial, almost coming back, proposed with a big box and a large parking lot. This zoning is certainly more appropriate for the Union Road residential aspect of it. Moving on to transportation policy, because this is where a lot has been happening that I don't think we were even aware of. Moving ahead for progress in the 21st Century Act, MAP 21 was signed in 2012 with President Obama. It took a, it kind of moved construction of road projects in a new direction, put an emphasis on local communities building multimodal projects, including bicycle and pedestrian paths. And it established safety performance measures, and I quote, "to achieve a significant reduction in traffic fatalities and serious injuries on all public roads." And all public roads means neighborhood streets, collectors, arterials, state highways, federal highway. It's, they're trying to reduce injuries and fatalities on all public roads. The FAST Act was signed in 2015. It built on the safety initiatives of MAP 21, and it encouraged all state DOTs to adopt design standards to provide for the safe and adequate accommodation of all users, motorized and non-motorized users. So it's very encouraging for the Town of Farragut and how we're trying to move forward and have multimodal design in our roads. Moving on to TDOT, how they reacted to these, the MAP 21 and the FAST Act. They adopted the multimodal access policy in July 2015. The intent of that policy was to promote the inclusion of multimodal accommodations in all transportation planning. The FAST Act directive, TDOT, with that directive, TDOT developed the multimodal project scoping manual and multimodal design chapters. Those were adopted in April of 2018. So just very recently, they started working through these multimodal policies. One of the things that the TDOT also had to do is start collecting data and set safety performance measurements targets for fatalities, serious injuries, the fatality rate, the serious injury rate, and most importantly for us, the number of non-motorized fatalities and serious injuries. Right now, and not meeting those measures can compromise the state of Tennessee's ability to have flexibility in distributing federal funds. So the one I highlighted in red is the one that TDOT is concerned that they will not be able to meet that target because they had an increase in non-motorized fatalities and serious injuries in 2017. It is very important that the local, all of municipalities, counties are looking out for that because if we lose the ability to, for them to have the flexibility to give us funding, then we're losing something that we rely on as a Town of Farragut to fund our roads. TPO did support those state targets in 2019. I did just want to briefly touch base that we have our Farragut policy and statutory documents that the Town of Farragut, the Planning Commission relies upon to, when we design anything that we're doing, these are subdivision regulations we adopt and the Comprehensive Land Use Plan update was another policy document that we adopted. Moving on to demographics, and they are changing. The millennials are coming. And if we ignore this demographic and how they prefer to live, we do it at our own peril. We must ask ourselves, how do we stay relevant and desirable as a high-quality residential community which attracts this cohort but also preserves the current quality of life we have grown accustomed to? In April 2019, a report by the National Association of Realtors, it indicated that millennials make up the largest share of home buyers at 37%. By 2028, millennials in Gen Z will make up 58% of the workforce. These are the people we hope will be buying our homes. So how do we appeal to this generation? They like walkable lifestyles. They like what is called the suburban neighborhood, a mix of urban and suburban lifestyles. They're having kids and desirous of good schools. Farragut has great schools, but so does Mariville, Oak Ridge, and Hardin Valley. Our parks, our amenities, and our walkability are huge draws. One unique draw for us is the potential for walkable activity hubs located throughout our town. The Comprehensive Land Use Plan update, this is Figure 23 out of that, identifies numerous walkable activity hubs throughout the town. And the steering committee has identified additional activity hubs. The Union Road Swan Farm Renaissance area is considered a walkable activity hub. This is the Union Road project timeline. It includes the adoption of MAP and FAST Act in red. The blue is all the TDOT's activities and the green is Town of Farragut and what we've done. So we've had, from the time that we approved the agreement with TDOT, we've had, including this meeting, six public meetings on Union Road. The public input has been very effective in shaping the design of this road. As you can see, they approved the multimodal project scoping manual and we received our design exception five months after that. So timing is everything. And we were very blessed to get an 11-foot lane with exception and 30 mile-per-hour design speed. That makes it not Everett Road. Moving on to miscellaneous information. This is, I'm just touching base on a few different things that were brought to my attention earlier this week in emails. I received an email recently that expressed concern about whether Fleaner Road would reopen to Watt Road. And let me be clear, I do not support and have never supported opening Fleaner Road. In fact, when I hosted my community conversation in June of 2017, I specifically stated that Fleaner Road being open should not be a consideration for the traffic impact study because it is not included on our road prioritization list for improvement and therefore is not a factor in future traffic considerations. The Board of Mayor and Alderman sets the priorities for which roads will be improved and when. The road priority list that the Board of Mayor and Alderman voted on last year specifically does not include Fleaner Road. Moving on to Union Road and the trip generation worksheet, and what's really happening on Union Road. Yeah, easy for me to say. In this report that we have today that was sent out, it says there's 700 vehicle trips per day on Union Road right now. I look at that and I don't understand that. It doesn't make any sense to me, there's no location that it was included with. So I went back to traffic analysis that I asked for when I prepared for my community conversation in 2017. If you'll look where it's underlined. Union Road, west of Everett Road, 12751 was where the tubes were put down and an actual count was made. And that was, that's in front of the Ivy Farm. And that turned, that was 916 at that location. And what that means is it's capturing traffic at that location. It's not capturing traffic that's coming out of Saddle Ridge and going right. And it's not capturing traffic that's coming out of Fox Run and going left. So I see that 916 and that tells me only part of the story. So that 700 number frustrated me. When I look at our, there's 360 homes in Fox Run, there's 250 homes in Saddle Ridge. That's 610 homes altogether. If you do the extrapolation that you usually hear, 10 trips per household, that would be 6,100 trips on Union Road from those two existing neighborhoods. I don't think we're seeing that, but we're certainly not seeing as little as 700. If you have 610 homes and you're saying that you have 700 trips, that means if everybody leaves, only 90 people come back because a trip is just, when you go out, is one trip and when you come back is the second trip. So the 700 never made sense to me. And I found that very frustrating to people who don't understand traffic studies. That would be very alarming to me, to see this analysis.
Where's the 700?
The 700 is in our documentation in here, in the report. And it gave no other information and I...
Is that comparable to the 916 here?
I would assume it was probably taken between Saddle Ridge entrance and Fox Run entrance. I don't know when. You see a 700, 659, that's on the other side of Union Road. So I don't know where the 700 came from. That's why I pulled this up, because at least I have actual data there. So I asked, when I found out that this was a concern, I asked Darrell to send me the traffic study that they had to conduct for this road. study that they had to conduct for this road. And if anybody wants a copy of this, you can put your email on the paperback there, and I will be happy to email you this. It is not easy reading. I'm not a traffic expert. I can add, subtract, multiply, and divide, but beyond that, I don't really understand how they do these things. So I tried to do a very, extrapolate things out, that the first number here, Ivy Farms, 250, 2,440, that is a, that's actually a sheet in this, in this report. And so what I did was, I ran in, I went in, I pulled that out. Ivy Farms does not have 250, they have 214. So what I did was, I just ratioed down, 250, 214. You divide it out, and you get 9.76 trips for dwelling unit, and that's how I ratioed down to 158 in the 205. The Fox Run and Saddle Ridge, AM and PM peak hours are actual information in this study. When you add up the total from just the AM hour and the PM peak hour, you have 825 trips coming out of Fox Run and Saddle Ridge, and that's just in two hours. That's the peak hour in the morning and the peak hour in the evening. So I'm not sure what's going on the rest of the 22 hours, but clearly it's more than 700 trips. It's going to be more than 900 trips. I don't know what the number is. In this traffic analysis, the TPO assumes that there's 1,540 vehicles per day along Union Road in year 2014, and they extrapolate that out to 2040, because when you're doing road design, it's 20 years out. They extrapolate out to 1,960 vehicles per day. That does not include the two areas developing. And so that's where, and then that, that comes out to 3,651. So if you're using the TPO model numbers, you're not getting, going from 700 to 3,700, you're going from 2,000 to 3,700. That's a, I say all that, and I think, you know, I don't even know if these numbers are real or not. And that's my frustration with traffic studies and trip generation and having that conversation. But I know we're not at 700. I don't know if we'll be at 3,700. That was the confusion I had with that. And so I wanted to share with you all, that's the struggle that I went through with reading a traffic impact study and trying to understand those numbers. I'm going to say, close with this. The role of this Planning Commission. According to Tennessee Code 134103, the Planning Commission may make reports and recommendations relating to the plan and development of the municipality's public officials. The role of this Planning Commission for tonight is to make a recommendation on a design for the reconstruction of Union Road, which fulfills the November 10, 2016 agreement between the Board of Mayor and Alderman and TDOT, and fulfills the town of Farragut standards established in our policy documents, our ordinances, and our subdivision regulations. And that's what I wanted to close on, and I appreciate your patience and time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Louise. Very informative.
Lot of good work here, too.
Any questions from the Planning Commission, to Louise, at this point? I have a question. What leeway do you see, Louise, at this point, that we have in modifying this design any further, even in portions of the road, to still fulfill our responsibility here?
The way I see it, from listening to our town engineer and our consulting engineer, and they're going back and forth, because these are new standards, we do not meet the standards to reduce the size of the walking path. 10 feet is, they said, we can, we can fit that in there, and that's what you need. I look at that, it's two 5-foot sidewalks combined together on one side. We already have the design exception to 11-foot lanes and 30 mile-per-hour design speed. We had originally requested 10, they rejected that and gave us 11. I think that even if we were designing this on our own, we'd still be doing 11-foot lanes and a 30 mile-per-hour design speed.
And that's good. You don't object to that?
No, I'm thrilled pieces, because it's, the 30 mile-per-hour design speed is about, it's, and I, I'm just describing this from a layman's term, it's the up and the down and the side and the side. And what, I put it this way, a 40 mile-per-hour design speed is a straight or flatter road.
Yes.
So-
More like Everett Road.
Yes, which is 40 mile-per-hour design speed. My concern is, knowing what we've known from federal policy and what we've adopted from our subdivision regulations, we have to start thinking about the safety of the most vulnerable user in this thoroughfare, and that is whoever is on that multi-use facility. I know that three feet is too close to the road. It is too close to the road, and I talk to people that run and walk on that trail, and they say, this is too, it's, people drive too fast, and I feel very vulnerable. That's why we changed our subdivision-
Are you talking about Everett Road?
Yes. Well, on Mcfee Road.
On Mcfee?
Mcfee Road is the same way, and that's three-foot grass strip. That is why we changed the grass strip to six feet for a collector and eight feet for an arterial, to give that separation that is very important for the safety. And it also, a six-foot grass strip can accommodate trees, eight-foot accommodates them better, but a six-foot grass strip accommodates trees. So when I hear that we can do the two and a half feet, I don't even like the three feet. If we're going to do a two and a half feet, which, if we want to do that, okay, but we better be prepared to put a barrier in, because pedestrian, the safety of the person that's using that facility has to be for, the forefront in our mind. It has to be the most important thing. As it is, the bridge comes into the bridge, I think we need a barrier there between the, because it's going to be back a curb. You can't put that all together, and I don't even care if it's for that short period of time. I really think we need a barrier between the road and the multi-use facility, so-
This is, this is just, as we're talking here, coming to my mind, and I don't know the answer, because I didn't investigate that before tonight, I have to admit. How much greenway is there in that area, in the Fox Run, Saddle Ridge area, walking greenway?
There's stuff at the top, there's something that comes off of Serenity that will connect into Ivy Farms. There's one at the top that connects into Saddle Ridge that will connect into Ivy Farms at the top, and then there's-
So we're going to, by our standards, we want all those to be connected through the Ivy Farm subdivision, right?
Yes.
So that goes from Fox Run then, through Ivy Farm, over to Saddle Ridge, right?
Saddle Ridge doesn't have a connection in the lower end, just at the top end.
And by the top end, you mean the furthest north?
Not the further north. It's, it's, it's probably three-quarters way up Rocheart, there's a trail that comes into the top of, goes up along the top of Ivy Farm and connects into the top of Saddle Ridge.
So this walkway you're envisioning, the people then in Saddle Ridge, Fox Run, Ivy Farm, coming down to the path alongside Union Road?
It's not just for them. It's-
Who else is it going to be for?
McKinley Station, Camden Grove, Andover, Fox Den, Sedgfield-
Okay, McKinley Station's along Everett Road.
Well, you've also got Cool Springs, and you've got, you've got Sedgfield and Cool Springs to the, to the west.
Further down, isn't it?
For asking who would use it?
Yeah, right.
Okay.
That's a sincere question. I can't envision, if I lived in Sedgfield or Cool Springs, I can't envision that I would walk down to that portion of Union Road for my pleasure walking, or riding a bicycle even there, simply because of the safety aspect, for one thing, you know?
But they have a sidewalk over there, and it's very well separated from, you know what, Roseanne, I would suggest you go out to Turkey Creek when you get a chance, Turkey Creek Road. Because of where the utility is, the, the trail is offset from the road, and it makes for a very pleasant experience. I will say this, I ran into Mike, Michael Wilson. He lives in McKinley Station. I ran into him in Fox Run. He is always looking for new trails to walk. I will say this, that particular area is supposed to be a walkable hub. It's going to feed up into whatever's happening on the front of Swan Farm, which we hope is a restaurant. Now, I see people from Camden Grove all the time walking up and down Everett Road, or coming into our neighborhood, that would probably continue to go straight to walk over-
To Union Road.
Yeah, to Union Road. But also, it is in our, is it our subdivision regulations where we require, we require pedestrian facilities built on all collectors and arterials?
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, that's a requirement. And our subdivision regulation, and our site plan requirements.
What happened in Saddle Ridge and Fox Run is the original phases, which were the, we'll call them the lower phases, lower elevation phases, those phases, we didn't have the connectivity requirements that we did in the later phases. So that's why there's not a sidewalk in the boulevard at Fox Run, or there's not a, which would have been a great candidate for a sidewalk in, you know, along that boulevard, even with the trees in there, there'd still be room. And then, and the same thing with Saddle Ridge, we just didn't have the pedestrian connectivity that we've embraced so much more in the past 10 or 15 years. You know, those now are getting to be 20, 25 years old, and so that's the reason why you see more connectivity in the higher elevations, in the newer phases than you do in the older phases.
I guess my point is that, from a safety perspective, I can see that the greenway trails and connectivity from subdivision to subdivision would be safer than alongside a collector road or whatever road, you know? That's my point.
Yeah, but people are generally going to take the shortest point from point A to point B, so they're going to take the shortest route.
That's why I asked about in Saddle Ridge where it was, I don't, I didn't-
They have a little more favorable grade, too, along roads, you know, for people that maybe, you know, have challenges with hillier land. Generally, if it's near the road, the road sphere, it's going to be a little bit flatter grade, so it might appeal to a greater, you know, amount of users. And then also, if you have the, if you have that tree in between the road and the trail, I think it, it can kind of, it does a lot of things, but it makes that, that atmosphere more inviting to the pedestrian or the bicyclists. It gives them, it calms, I mean, it slows traffic, too. I mean, it's been proven that planting street trees slows traffic down, because people perceive the width of the travelway as more narrow, and they just by nature tend to slow down a little bit, as opposed to a road like Everett, where it's more wide open, and it kind of almost invites you to get a little bit faster.
Well, the issue that I'm wrestling with, and I'm actually using one of Louise's terms, wrestling, she likes that word, and I'm likewise wrestling with this issue, because I envision, in this rendering that's in our packet, that whether it be a three-foot or an eight-foot grass strip, that it, when the trees become mature that are planted there, should this happen, it's going to be a very inviting and beautiful place. I mean, it's going to really look good. But I'm also hearing the citizens say that they are not interested in that, they want to maintain the rural look, you know?
But they're not going to retain the rural look, what you're going to end up, if you put that trail three feet from it, you're going to have what we have on Union, Everett Road.
And that's why I was asking, do we have to have that, you know, in order to, to maintain the funding proportion?
I sit on the TPO board, and yes, we do.
We do, okay.
Yes.
We, there's no getting around it. Okay. Well, I'm, I'm just trying to think of the, how, the best way to meet our safety goal, as well as minimize the impact, adverse impact on the property owners along that road, and particularly, the one that has the greatest frontage there is impacted the worst, you know? That's where I'm coming from. I'm just trying to find some kind of outside-the-box solution.
I, I get you. I, I, you know, let me, let me make this clear. I'm extremely sympathetic about what the Trout's are going through. Mrs. Trout grew up on this farm. This is her piece of Serenity. This is her piece of, she comes home and she sees this, and it's beautiful, and it's, this is, she has friends, she has wonderful stories of growing up on this, and I, I'm sad about that, I am. When I think about what's coming in, Ivy Farms is coming in, Swan Farm is coming in, that traffic is coming in, regardless of whether we fix Union Road or not, that traffic is coming in. Union Road has been serving as a suburban collector for more than two decades, and it is a dangerous, deteriorating road. It, it's a public-
I don't think there's any, any question from any, I haven't heard from last month's hearing that there was any objection whatsoever from any citizen to the widening of it.
But it's, but you, once you, once you make the decision that, okay, we're going to have, we're going to fix this road, we're going to do this road, then you have to look at your own standards and say, okay, how is this going to, what do we need for this to be successful for the ongoing future? We have invested in having some kind of bike ped facility throughout our town. To not have it here is snatching defeat from the jaws of victory, because we're about to connect straight through from Watt Road all the way to Lovell Road. This is, after Andover's built, this is the last piece.
Okay. As a commissioner, I always try to keep in mind the best interest of the whole, okay? Not just one individual, such as the Trout's or the McDonald's, I think, across the street, according to this paperwork here in front of me, or the next-door neighbors. I'm not looking at just the individual. I am trying to look at the whole. But I'm also, in doing that, trying to see what, if any, alternatives are available to minimize the impact on their private interest as well. And I'm wondering about, when you're talking about the Swan Farm, are we not going to require sidewalks on that side and that area?
It's, it's up above.
As part of subdivision regulations?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, it's going to be up above. So why do we need one up above there, if that's available to the Swan Farm, and need this one over here available to those on the north side of Union Road, when we've got connectivity through greenways?
Because it's not just about Fox Run and Saddle Ridge.
Well, it's going to be Ivy Farm as well.
But it's not just about those three subdivisions.
Well, primarily, is it not?
No.
Oh, I'm sure not going to go over there. You know, folks, you will see me over there.
But, Roseanne, that's, it's, that's, it's not about you, and it's not about me, it's about our community and people from-
Well, what makes you think that so many people would go over that?
Because I see how much-
On a, on a dangerous road.
I see, it's not going to be dangerous.
Oh, it will, still.
No, it won't.
That road is just not safe, period.
People, you see people on Mcfee Park, all, I don't, I guess we're not going to see eye to eye.
I mean, you see people walking down Concord.
Well, that's okay, you know, we each have a vote, don't we?
Yes.
Right, that's okay. I'm, I'm just trying to, again, explore the alternatives.
I understand.
Thank you.
If I'm correct about this, we're, we're, we're using right-of-way, even from the Trout's? Is that correct?
Well, I think that's a question, in my mind, you know, but that, that's not an issue that can be resolved here. That's a legal matter, you know, that has to be resolved at some other point in time. We can't resolve it. I don't understand, again, I heard the answer to my question, but I'm not convinced that it was rightly obtained, okay?
Why's that?
The 30-foot right-of-way in front of the 17 or whatever acres it is of the Trout's that has frontage on Union Road, I just, if I had been looking at that back in the days, I would never have agreed as a, as an owner to granting that right-of-way.
But it did happen, so.
Yeah, well, yeah.
But then you wouldn't have been able to subdivide the property.
We're not going to resolve, these are legal issues that I don't want to debate here.
There is something I'd like to ask, when residents come up and share your thoughts, would you let us know what your thoughts are when it comes to the grass strip and the trees and the amount of separation? Because I, I think collectively- Because I, I think collectively, what I'm hearing is an option to do nothing is not, not an option tonight. And I don't think any of the residents are saying, "Do nothing." And so, but I think what we have before us, the decision that I see tonight, is, assuming we're going to take action on this tonight, is I would like to hear thoughts about the, the grass strip and the trees. If, if the trees are a holy grail, then we need a bigger grass strip. If the trees are not a holy grail, personally, I don't see an issue as much with the separation. I live on Concord Road, which has a much higher volume of traffic, and our sidewalks are directly on the curb. It is not the most comfortable thing. You don't walk right next to the curb, you walk, you kind of get over. But I'm not as concerned, and this is a 30 mile an hour design speed, so I, I probably am, am still very open-minded to this grass strip. It has been brought to our attention, which is different than last month, that there is a requirement for the grass strip, so the option of, of not having a grass, grass strip and still, still meeting the requirements of TDOT has been taken off the table for us. So anyways, you do come up and share your thoughts, I'm taking an informal poll, I'd like to know what your thoughts are with the grass strip and the trees. Anybody else, and then maybe we can hear from some citizens?
I guess I have a question and a comment. I've listened to a lot of comments from the residents, and, and like Louise, I sympathize with the issues that you bring up. And I'm new to this commission, so there's been a lot going on over the years, as I see from Louise's timeline. But there have been a number of compromises that have been made by the town in order to resolve some of the issues that the town has brought up. I don't know who to ask, but can we kind of summarize the compromises that have been made since we started this thing until where we are now? For example, I know that we got rid of the couple of roundabouts, et cetera, et cetera. Can somebody summarize that?
The design exceptions, I mean, Larry.
Had 12-foot lanes and a 40 mile per hour design speed. We've gotten that reduced to 11-foot lanes and a 30 mile per hour design speed. The original, in, in November of 2016, I think I have the contract in here somewhere, I'll pull it for you, it was proposed to have, I believe, an eight-foot trail and a five-foot sidewalk and two four-foot bike lanes, plus the 12-foot lanes and the 40 mile per hour design speed.
Which is a total footprint of what?
I don't know, but it was a lot.
It's huge.
It was overwhelming.
And you're talking about that, you're talking about a sidewalk on one side of the road and a walking trail on the other side of the road.
That just doesn't even sound feasible, does it?
Well, let's just keep going with the.
So, in my conversation, my community conversation, I proposed a roundabout at Fox Run. It was, we, we do have traffic that speeds by, and a roundabout is a perfect way to deal with the traffic flow and get people to slow down. We found out from doing that it is very difficult to retrofit a roundabout into an existing entrance of a subdivision and make it look attractive. It was overwhelming, it was out of scale, it was unattractive, and it was very alarming. But no one ever has to come to the front of Fox Run subdivision and, and have a car fly by and, and debate, man, I wish we would have considered a roundabout, because we did and we didn't like it. So we took it out. So the roundabout was taken out in front of Saddle Ridge, I mean, Fox Run, they had proposed one in front of Saddle Ridge that, I'm not sure why, because that was never part of the original idea. That was removed. The trail originally went straight on the north side. Talking with Ellen Zavisco, we, I talked to her about pedestrian safety, and we moved it at Saddle Ridge across the street to the south side, which actually made it easier to line up Fleener and Union and preserved more of the open space in front of Saddle Ridge's clubhouse. And we had easement on the south side. So it, it worked out from a pedestrian safety point of view and from a cost point of view. So those were all of the concessions that we've made so far.
So how, how do you cross reunion then?
Cross at Saddle Ridge.
With a crosswalk.
At the, there's.
With a new crosswalk.
Thank you. Which in itself is not too good.
Yeah, well, that was a, that was a discussion we had last week, last month. The, the decision between crossing at Saddle Ridge or crossing at Hobbs, Fleener, it's a safer pedestrian cross.
I remember that.
Yeah.
Okay, do we have any comments by the residents or audience?
Mark has some.
Yeah, I can just call out these, and first one is Cynthia Gallantine.
Okay, before we start this, I hope everyone does have a, a copy of the agenda. If not, there, I think there's some at the front. On the back of that, there is a thing that you probably need to read and adhere to. We sure appreciate it.
And, and we will limit the time to five minutes?
Yeah, I've got it.
Mark is operating the gong.
Yeah.
Good evening, I have some prepared comments. My name is Cynthia Gallantine, and I live at 237 Saddle Ridge Drive in the Saddle Ridge subdivision, and I've lived there for over eight years. I'll keep my comments very brief. I attended last month's workshop meeting. I applaud the commission's desire and patience in hearing all of the comments, mostly negative, that went on for well over two hours. I have attended most, if not all, of the public hearings on this issue and have met with and discussed this project personally with town staff and officials. I presently serve and have served as the president of my HOA for over two years and have been on the board of directors for more than four. Saddle Ridge's HOA has not taken a position on the road project other than to work with town staff to protect our amenities and the overall home values in the subdivision and to further, and to function as an intermediary communicator between the town and its homeowners. Since the preliminary plan, the portion impacting Saddle Ridge has, was made public and sent out to the subdivision in January of this year, I, as president, have not received one single complaint from a resident about the present plans. I believe most residents desperately want the road improved and are happy the town has worked hard to minimize the impact to our beautiful subdivision entrance and to minimize the impact to other homeowners. Last month, apart from a few residents speaking primarily on behalf of one impacted homeowner, I'm not aware of anyone but myself from Saddle Ridge who attended the meeting. It appears, in my personal opinion, that concern by the residents of my subdivision is low. I have heard on multiple occasions that residents do not want another Everett Road thoroughfare situation for Union Road. I agree with those sentiments, but in my opinion, the two roads are very different. Union Road has many dips and curves, which lend naturally to a lower design speed, and by installing a curb, will likely cause drivers to go even slower, so they won't hit it like on Grigsby Chapel Road. The plans I've viewed, and I appreciate the renderings that were provided, in no way resemble Everett Road. I applaud the work the town staff and officials have done to obtain the narrower lane width and speed on the preliminary plans, and I also appreciate the efforts to accommodate residents most impacted by the road project. I ask tonight personally that the commission approve the preliminary plans at 11-foot lanes with an eight-foot grass strip with trees and a 10-foot shared path, so that this forward, this plant, this project can move forward, so we can have a new road. Again, I want to thank all of you for your tremendous effort in your, in the designing so far, a road that is safe, functional, and beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next speaker is Russ Buchanan.
Good evening, Russ Buchanan. I live at 663 Brochar Boulevard in Fox Run. And I also would comment that the road needs to be improved. I'm not a resident that says, "Leave it alone." I do advocate, excuse me, a, a respect for our, all of our neighbors, not just my neighbors in Fox Run, or my neighbors in Saddle Ridge, but my new neighbors and on the Ivy Farm development, the, the neighbors on Hobbs Road. And I've said before that I think it's overdesigned. And I have to disagree that folks will drive slower. And when we widen the road and make it larger, people are going to drive faster. They already drive 45 miles an hour on Union Road as it is, on a 15-foot, one-lane road. I've seen it. I drive there. I don't drive 45, but I meet people driving that fast. It's very unsafe. And I think that the town should reconsider taking the TDOT funding, and they can have their connectivity through the neighborhoods with greenways. When the Ivy Farm is developed, there will be greenways that connect Fox Run and Ivy Farm and Saddle Ridge, two of them at least, and that will be your connectivity all the way to Level Road, once the sidewalk at Andover is done. So we have that connectivity, and we have it in a green space and in a space that is not in a mock highway. And I don't think that we need to have such a, a, a large strip for people to, to walk and ride bicycles on. I don't think it's going to be used. I just don't think that it's going to be used like some folks envision. I think the connectivity is, is made, and we, we could take our own town money and be even more respectful of all of our neighbors for now and the future, and maintain that connectivity. And if we table the TDOT requirement, we don't, we don't have to have some of these overdesigned elements.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next is Brad Thompson.
Good evening, and I do thank you all for your service. It really is service to the community. I know it's a difficult job, so thanks for listening to our groups this evening. My name is Brad Thompson. My wife Judy and I moved to Farragut and to Fox Run a little over two and a half years ago. And by way of self-disclosure, I will have to say, after living in the Cedar Bluff area for 30-plus years, I told my wife, if I am going to go through the trauma of moving, number one, I'm not moving into another subdivision, and I'm not moving to Farragut. So what did I do? I moved into another subdivision, and I moved to Farragut. And you know why? It was a good decision.
What's your address?
621 Trowbridge Lane.
Trowbridge, okay.
Which is off Level, which is off Brochar. So, happy to be here, and in fact, I've gotten involved since I've been here. I am now on the board at, at Fox Run and have enjoyed it immensely. Good bunch of people to work with. I think two or three things come to mind when I think about the, the proposed Union Road project. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not going to call it an improvement project, because I don't believe it is. I will agree with you, Russ, I think it's a massive, massive overkill. The first thing that comes to mind is a practical consideration, and that's ingress egress. If you've ever tried to exit Fox Run between 7:00 and 8:30 a.m., it can be a bit challenging. Ms. Vice Mayor, I don't know about these numbers either. I think they're, who knows? Who knows? You know, they, they pulled them out of, let's just say, various places. But regardless, I think there can be little doubt, number one, when Ivy Farms is completed, and number two, if and when these changes are made to a Union Road, that traffic count is going to increase significantly. And at rush hour, it's going to be virtually impossible to exit, particularly the left, onto Union Road. As my Catholic aunt in Minnesota would say, you just have to say three Hail the Marys and gun it. And that's about all you can do. The second thing, this is much more of a subjective matter, but frankly, we can already notice, of course, we're not that far from the interstate, we're not that far from Everett Road, Everett International Speedway, as I've heard it called, in Kingston Pike, there is noise. There is no doubt in my mind that if Union Road is improved, there will be a significant increase in noise. So, you know, those, those two things are, are just, I think, a given. One of the things that keeps coming to mind is this thing of design speed. Okay, I know what design speed is. Who knows what the design speed is on Everett Road?
Forty miles per hour.
Exactly. How many of you have ever tried to drive 40 miles an hour on Everett Road?
I've driven less than that.
Usually, when I try to do that, the traffic, the vehicle behind me is so close, I can't even see their front bumper or their grill, and they're going, you know, making obscene gestures at me. Russ, I'll agree with you. I've tried to be reasonable too on Union Road, and on a 15-foot, less-than-ideal roadway, people drive far too fast. And very candidly, that's coming from a person who has a lead foot. I, I like to go fast, and I have to control myself, but I do know that there is a safe way to drive and an unsafe way to drive. And if you take a roadway, as I have heard several of you say here tonight, if you straighten it, if you curb it, if you reduce the natural impediments to speed such as curves and hills, guess what people are going to do? Do any of you have any question what people are going to do? The right foot's going to go down further and further. Guys, it's, it's just the fact of life.
You've got one, one minute left.
One minute, okay. My basic view on this thing is that with the limited number of people actually served by Union Road, this is a massive expenditure of energy, of time, of resources, that's going to be primarily a convenience to people running back and forth between Loudoun County and Turkey Creek. If you've driven on, on those roads and you've paid any attention to the county stickers on the library, on the license plate in front of you, a good portion of it are Loudoun County. And I have some friends in Loudoun County, I have nothing against Loudoun County residents, but it's an awful lot to ask the people of Farragut to expend, what, a million dollars of our money, more, more or less, to do that. I have been told that this is probably not going to happen, but my, my personal opinion is, I would like to see Everett Road closed. I would like to see a light placed at Kingston Pike at the direct connector from Ivy Road. I don't think that would cause an inconvenience to anybody. And frankly, I think a light at that intersection would be much less costly, costly than spending a million dollars on, on Union Road. I think it's massive overkill, and I would urge you to postpone this vote.
Thank you.
Until we can look at it. Thank you.
The next is Celeste Lewis.
Mark, you want to tell who's after her, and they can be coming over here?
Charlene Trout's after her.
My name is Celeste Lewis, and I am a resident of 11636 Bermuda Drive, and I am familiar with the road and discussion. And I do appreciate the effort made by the town of Farragut to create a walk-friendly community. My husband and I have been runners for 25 years. I have three children that run competitively. I appreciate the town of Farragut's concern for safety, but I also appreciate the current aesthetic of Union Road, as well as the small, as a small country road. This small-town rural feel is what drew my family to Farragut from another part of West Knoxville. It's my opinion that an eight-foot greenway is absolutely not necessary. My husband and I are parent volunteers for the Farragut Intermediate School and Middle School Cross Country Teams. So on a regular basis, I take about 10 or so kids out, out at a time, and we run on four- and five-foot walkways, and we have never had an issue. It's also my opinion that the proposed road design completely changes the current aesthetic of Union Road. The current property owners were drawn to this road and invested in their property because they wa, they like the way it is right now. because they like the way it is right now. Every effort should be made to improve safety without changing the overall appearance of Union Road. I am concerned that the town of Farragut is pushing its personal agenda and town vision with little or no regard to current property owners. While I recognize that change due to growth is sometimes inevitable, I am asking that the town of Farragut recognize its responsibility to minimize the impact of change on current residents, the property appearance, and property value. These are our homes. It's where we spend the better part of our lives. It's where we raise our families, and we make our memories. Ask yourself, if this was my house, my street, my yard, would I want someone to do this for me? And then remember what we learned in kindergarten back then, to do unto others as you would have them do unto you. And I agree with the gentleman who said, "Take TDOT out of the picture." Town of Farragut needs to do its own work and take care of their neighbors.
Thank you.
Charlene Trout, and after her, Leroy Sims.
He'll come and get up over here where he can get to them.
I'm Charlene Trout, and I live at 12817 Union Road. And Mark, I would like to thank you for sending out the notification alerts on such an early timeline this month. The Union Road project will directly or indirectly impact hundreds of families or property owners. I have lived over 52 years on Union Road before the existence of the town of Farragut. My husband and I have called it home for 44 years. No one will be impacted more than us. We own 26% of the road frontage on the north side. First, I will speak on the direct impact to us with the present design. We will be left with a loss of property value and a loss of curb appeal. We will be left with only 27 feet of grass directly in front of our house, along with our front yard not even being symmetrical from road view. We will be looking into an embankment because we are on the downward side. There will be a loss of privacy with the path being so close to our front glass doors. A loss of monthly income. Our fields beside our house are farm rental on each side for horses. Horses like trees for shade and shelter, as anyone who has traveled past our house can attest to. Losing 48 mature trees, one of those being an oak over 200 years old. The present plan will put 19 feet, will come 19 feet under the drip line of the oak tree. While we always knew that someday the road would be widened, we never dreamed it would come with such an excessive, unnecessary design. Everyone who travels on Union Road will be affected. The road needs to be widened for safety. That was the original first goal of the project. With wider roads comes the entasement of speeding, example Everett Road. Speeding and traffic calming issues are issues that BOMA seems to be continuously addressing. Keeping the lane width large enough to allow traffic safety but reduced to ensure speed reduction should be a good goal to work on. Reducing the lane on Peterson Road to nine feet was just recently proposed to control speeding. The design of the road should begin with this goal, not design, build the road, then look for ways to accomplish speed control. The second original goal of the project was connectivity. The connectivity already exists between Saddle Ridge and Fox Run, at the top and through Pecos, when that is opened, into the new subdivision. When Ivy Farm is developed, it will exist between all three. Why is it necessary for a 10-foot pathway along Union? Bikers will not use it. They don't use it on Everett. A 10-foot path is not necessary for one or two people to run, or, as the previous speaker said, for a group of people to run on. The entire Union Road project is only eight tenths of a mile long. Presently, Fox Run and Saddle Ridge residents have to walk or ride their bikes in their streets with their traffic, seven tenths of a mile to even get to Union Road. The town's goal of connectivity can be met without the extreme design. A comment that was made by a board member and a commissioner last month was Farragut is in competition with Hardin Valley, Blount County, et cetera. With that, I agree. A way to accomplish this is to offer different options to potential residents when they are choosing a place to call home. Comments I just recently heard were, quote, "I just love driving down your street. It gives you such a peaceful feeling," unquote. Quote, "When moving here from up north, we drove down the street, and I knew it was really where I wanted to live, a rural, calm, peaceful setting," unquote. Quote, "We moved here from the west, extreme west, and love it. We tell everyone that it feels like we live in the country in the middle of the city." The ability to live in the country in the middle of the city can be an entasement to Farragut. Lastly, while we appreciate the town's vision for new undeveloped land, the existing property owners impacted have rights and wishes that need to be considered. The town needs to advocate for their rights and keep the impact as minimum as possible with their development visions and plans. Designs developed need to be balanced with and respect shown to current property owners. This present design needs to be implemented in new land that can be developed around the plan. This is too big of a footprint to be retrofitted into an already established, compacted area. I encourage the commissioners to either, quote, "Go it alone," unquote, as was stated by a board member much earlier in this project discussion, and that was stated several times, or reduce the overall footprint of the design, slide the project to the south side as to share equally with both sides of the road, and/or meet with concerned impacted residents on site to work toward reaching the original goals of the project in compromise and harmony. This decision would be a wonderful entasement to encourage people to call Farragut home.
Leroy Sims, and then Melissa Bowles after that.
My name is Leroy Sims, and I live at 504 Brochard Boulevard. And I've lived there for more than 25 years. I've got a different viewpoint about the road in a sense that I'm speaking basically from personal experience. I've walked all the subdivisions, Split Rail, Saddle Ridge, Camden Grove, even Kingston Pike, and that's harrowing. If you want to walk Kingston Pike, you're in for something. But anyway, I've walked all the different routes. And currently, my wife and I are now walking, and we're up to six miles. We walk from Fox Run all the way up Union Road, and we go into that park, Bob Leonard Park. It's three miles from Fox Run to the park. And then we walk in the park, and then we make a total of about six miles, the round trip. This route by far is the best route, primarily because we don't have to feel like we're walking, climbing Mount Everest when we take all these other different routes. It's fairly flat coming from Fox Run all the way to Watt Road. And right now, we're walking on a regular basis, on a daily basis, and I'm hoping I don't get run over before this road is built. Because it's such a nice path. It's tranquil, quiet. And if we had a wider strip, like the eight-foot strip and the trees, because people are going to drive more than 30 miles, going to drive 40 miles, and you don't want to feel like somebody's going to jump the curb and run over you. So I just think it's wonderful if we could have this road built. I realize there's a lot of different views and the setting of people that have been there for a long time. But from personal experience, walking it every morning, and particularly after dark or real early in the morning before the sun comes up, it's scary walking along that road right now. And I'm praying that I, like I said before, that I don't get hit. If I can find a way to get across Watt Road without taking my life in my own hands to get to the park, I'd be okay. But I think it's a wonderful project, and I think it'd be well-deserved for all the people that want to walk and get to the park and take the park in consideration, along with walking from the subdivisions. So that's my piece.
Mr. Sims, I have a question for you.
Yes, yes.
Along your and your wife's walks, how many other folks do you encounter?
We encounter not a whole lot of people. I mean, because it means that it's at various times. We run into more people in the park. But we've been looking for just the perfect route that's not overtaxing, that we can kind of increase our amount of distance. And we find that this particular route is the most enjoyable, going all the way up Saddle Ridge, which is mountainous, going all the way up Brochard, which is mountainous, going all the way up Split Rail, which is mountainous. This is the flattest route that takes it from Fox Run all the way into the park, and it's a pleasant, wonderful walk. And that's all I can say.
Thank you.
Okay, Melissa Bowles, and after her, Pat Pilgrim.
Melissa Bowles, I live at 12608 Union Road. A lot of this, I'm sure, is just going to sound repeat. Where I live was my grandfather's farm. Part of it was farmland, yes. And nobody's, I don't think anybody here is going to argue, something's got to be done with Union Road. Long overdue. But I think you're fixing to turn it to an overkill. I don't, I cannot say that because of the traffic flow and the way Everett Road is, it's very, very seldom. You don't hardly see anybody. And people that may walk, let's say, comes out of Fox Run, walks up toward Everett, and you make the turn to stay on your multi-use, unless you do something to that corner, somebody's going to get run over because the cars come flying to turn down Union Road. And I'm afraid that's what's going to happen. I don't care what you, your trees or whatever, it's going to happen going down Union Road. And Ms. Kyle, your suggestion, if all of this is for your subdivisions, you've already got part of it going. When the Ivy Farm is completed, it all can meet. And you're talking about going over to Renaissance, then they can come down. Why can they not, let's say, why can they not come down what would be your entrance of Ivy Farm? And you're going to have sidewalks on the Swan property over to Kingston Pike? Or the access road? And surely to goodness, to get onto Kingston Pike coming out of there, you're going to have a red light. So they've got a pretty good safe to be able to cross to get over to Renaissance that I think from the committee, I feel like you're the only one listening to your community. I know when this was first presented, and a question was asked at that time, can the city of Farragut fund the road where TDOT does not have to dictate what you've got to do? Listen to your community. Listen to those of us. And the answer was yes. Now, time has passed. I don't know if it's still even feasible. But listen to your people.
Thank you.
My name is Pat Pilgrim. I live at 12826 Union Road. My wife Penny and I moved to that residence about three years ago, and been working on the house that I own. And the reason we moved out there from a different part of Knoxville is the landscape and the way you feel when you get out there. You're, it's not, it's like you say, it's not in the city, but you're out in the country, it feels like. You know, and that's what everybody likes about the area there. We know Union Road needs to be fixed. It needs to be widened. But it seems like that's a lot. When I look at that picture, that doesn't even represent Union Road. That's a highway. That's a speedway. You know, and, you know, to have the curves and have the ups and downs and everything. And you talked about the trees. I have, you know, 70-foot white oaks right in my front yard, which are probably all going to be took down because of the road. I mean, and, you know, I just want to let you know, you know, that's where I feel. The road is overstepped and look for more country-like. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kristy Blatt, and after her, Joyce Sayers.
Hi, my name is Kristy Blatt. I live at 201 Brochard. Me and my husband and my son moved in about two years ago. We bought the property because of the rural feel of Union Road and because it was on the corner that was on a 15-foot road. I agree with the other speakers who say that this is overkill. Right now, as one of the speakers said, getting out of my driveway in the morning is already difficult, and it's going to be impossible once this is put through, just because of the traffic being backed up. The noise is going to be unbelievable. The speed is definitely going to be way more than 30 miles an hour, just like Everett. And my final issue is what it's going to do to my property value. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Joyce Sayers, and I live at 12812 Pecos Road. And we, my husband and I, have lived in Farragut for 15 years. And again, as most of the majority so far have said, we moved to Saddle Ridge subdivision. We love Union Road, the feel of Union Road. We're kind of dealing with a double-edged sword. I live on Pecos Road, and so we're kind of dealing with the Ivy Farm and connecting of Pecos Road onto, into the Ivy Farms, and we're dealing with Union Road. I believe that the Union Road is overkill with everything that's going on. It is dangerous. We all have agreed with that. One of the things that I guess I would concede to, because we have to protect our neighbors, we have to be good stewards, is to put connectivity through the neighborhoods, through our roads. We already know at some point, at some level, Pecos Road is going to connect into Ivy Farms, whether it be an emergency access, whether it be a viable road, whatever. And to connect through, that means, it would also mean that the town of Farragut would at some level have to step up and put sidewalks in on our streets for the safety issue. I hear a lot of talk about safety, 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 and we have no sidewalks, and that's just a whole nother issue. But I love the feel of Union Road, and I love being in a rural area. I also looked at the document that Vice Mayor Povlin was talking about, the state of Tennessee, the Department of Transportation, from 2018. the Department of Transportation, from 2018. It's a 157-page document. I didn't print out all 157 pages, but I did look at multi-modal design background, and one of the things that really stuck out in my mind was, they say, in one of the opening statements, that designing a multi-modal street is not a one-size-fits-all approach. It requires an analysis of various site conditions to determine appropriate treatments and solutions. Factors that should be considered include the physical characteristics of the street, urban versus suburban versus rural context, surrounding land use, and expected pedestrian, bike and motor vehicle demand. But one of the things that really struck me is that later on down, they said, "The goal of a successful multi-modal project is to meet the needs of all," and they capitalized "all," "users of a street while being good stewards of limited financial resources." And this is coming from Tennessee Department of Transportation. So I think we need to take this at heart and decide how we want that road to look, and I think that road needs to be kept rural for our neighbors, for our neighborhood, and for the feel of the rural road and for the town of Farragut. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have Robin Askew, and after her is Mike Rothman.
I am Robin Askew, 620 Market Street, downtown Knoxville. Y'all are familiar with me. I'm from the Ivy and Swan projects, and hello. I want to say that I'm here representing the trouts, but I wanted to talk just very briefly about a couple of points. I look at this, and I am, I'm recently into this particular aspect of what's going on with Union Road. I want to say that I've heard a lot of these citizens say that this is overkill, and it may well be. You're trying to balance the objectives of the federal government, the state, and your own community in doing what's right here. And then you've got the folks who are most impacted, who live on this road. I look at particularly the trouts, and I want to say emphatically that I am not certain that that right-of-way is established, nor that it is located exactly where the state and others may think it is. There are legal precedents with regard to usage and some other things that have happened throughout the past, so I don't think that right-of-way is set in stone. However, I do think that there are ways to meet your objectives, and I'm confused as to, based on what I heard Mr. Smith say, as to why there's not movement to the south side when my clients are being adversely impacted tremendously in a, just in aesthetic and a monetary way. There's got to be a better way to design this. And regardless of what your traffic counts are, and I'm no traffic engineer either, but regardless of what they are, that grass strip's not gonna change a single trip. It's not gonna change a single trip down that road. And as a participant in the rezoning of the Ivy and the Swan Farms, everyone will recall, that development was required. You can't get a building permit until that connector road from Union to Kingston Pike is completed, because you want to cut traffic off from that side of Union Road and take it straight down to Kingston Pike. So you've got improvements already in place. You've got a roundabout there that you are gonna have built, that's gonna be paid for in great part by that development. And the road certainly in the Swan Farm is paid for entirely by the developer. And that's, right now, we're looking at $400,000 just for that road. So I think that there are also issues, their driveway is gonna cut directly in to the multi-modal path. So they're gonna come in and out of their home across that walkway. I would implore you to look at designing this in a less restrictive manner, in a way that listens to the voices of your citizens and gives you what you need, which is an improved Union Road, but not at the expense of what you've heard your citizens say. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Mike Rothman, 659 Bouchard Boulevard in Fox Run. First, a disclaimer, I do not, I do not have a home on Union Road. As a matter of fact, until recently, I didn't know anybody on Union Road. But I do know that 30-some-odd years ago, Mayor Bob Leonard asked me and a few others to start a Farragut Chamber of Commerce, and for three years, I was the president of that. And I can tell you that the Bob Leonard would be appalled to think that the town of Farragut is trying to displace the citizens of our fair town to put a road in that the citizens do not want. Now, I think there are some options. One of the commissioners very brightly said, "You've got connections on Fox Run, we have one right off of Bouchard, we have one off of Serenity Drive that's right by the vice mayor's home. Ours connect already to Saddle Ridge. These new properties on Ivy Farm are going to connect to the two on the right quadrant of Fox Run." I didn't know whether, I figured that you were gonna have one off of Pecos Road, so I assumed you'd have another one. And I thought that the developer of the village, as well as the farm, have done a great job as far as laying out walkways and sidewalks that we could all connect to. And as the lady before me pointed out, the developer is building, and he's in the progress right now, from Kingston Pike up to, he's doing the roundabout per the February 21st quote of Mark Shipley, that they're doing the roundabout and then carrying it on up. So the developer is doing all the heavy lifting. My question is, or one other statement is that, as the lady pointed out, you don't need wide 10-foot walkways. We're gonna have the connectors. Why are we going to put anything on Union Road other than maybe a five-foot sidewalk at the most? I would propose that we table the T-Dot money, the million dollars that the town has appropriated for the citizens, that you take that money, and you, if you wish, do two 11-foot lanes, as our vice mayor was very good in getting done, put up a curve and a five-foot sidewalk, period. You ask about trees? If I were putting trees on, I would put the trees to the north of the sidewalk to help buffet the, and the sound of the neighbors. And if I were on the planning commission in Bowler, I would insist, I would not ask, I would insist that the developer on the villages put up either Leyland Cypress or Green Giant or Giant Greens, whatever they call, the big trees to buffet off the south side. I understand all they have in there is landscaping. You're gonna open up and have nothing but traffic noise from Kingston Pike all the way through. And if you want to be proactive, and you don't want your legacy to go down as having a fiasco, and I think that the Everett Road, quite honestly, is a fiasco, and I would be ashamed if my name were associated with it, and I say, "Let's avert that. Let's do what's right. Let's do what's right for the citizens. Forget, let's, don't be," I was gonna say a nasty word to the money, "but let's forget that money, let's use our money." If not, you're gonna, you're doing nothing but destroying what Bob Leonard and the founders of our town was. One of the things he told me when I moved here from Dallas, he says, "We do not want a beard in. We do not want billboards. Mike, we don't want to bring industry in here. We don't want manufacturing. We want this to be a community with good schools, good parks, and a place for our citizens to come and enjoy and relax after they go into the squabble of going to New York or Los Angeles or wherever you fly to on business, as I had done during my career." I thank you for your hard work. I hope that you will give us attention to what the people have said today. I hope that you will, as one of the ladies said, "Do the right thing. Be a good steward. Do what's right for the citizens. Forget this money. Forget this money." Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeremy Croll, and then Michael Kilby after him.
Can we get everybody lined up over here to?
Sorry, long trip from over there. Jeremy Croll, 679 Bouchard Boulevard. So I've lived in Fox Run for, coming up on eight years. Just a couple of things. So first of all, thank you guys for your service. I know this has been a lot of work, and I know you're not doing it for the money. When I lived, I lived over off of North Shore and Tools Bend Road before I moved out this way, and if any of you are very familiar with that area, you know you don't walk anywhere or ride a bike anywhere, you're gonna take your life literally into your hands. So I do applaud, you know, the overall walkway and connectivity goals of Farragut. I think in this case, the challenge is we're trying to sort of retrofit new ideas and new planning ideas into, let's be honest, it's a goat path over there, right? There's not a lot of room. There was never any planning when it was built. As Povlin said, you know, it was built without a plan. I think we can all agree to that. So I think, I think you guys have a really difficult job, and I do appreciate that. But I want to share a couple of things that I'm not sure too many people are thinking about or talking about. So with this road, and number one, this is definitely a better plan than what I saw a year plus ago when we first had this conversation, and it was, you know, 12-foot lanes and spacers and paths on both sides, and it looked like it was 50 feet wide. It might have been 50 feet wide. That said, I think, a couple of things that I think about is, number one, Watt Road. I would say with absolute passion, we could never open that to Watt Road for a number of reasons. I think the primary goal for this road should be a singular focus on getting the people who live in the subdivisions that are there now and the new ones coming in, in and out of their neighborhoods on a daily basis, and that's it. I think every vote, anything you guys consider should be to make sure that that's the only thing that we're encouraging, that we're not encouraging through traffic, we're not encouraging people from, you know, Lenore City out west to take a shortcut to Turkey Creek, we're not encouraging commercial traffic to come into the back of what may be developed on Swan Farm. I think we can all agree that all of that traffic, you know, should be going down Kingston Pike to, you know, Campbell Station, whatever. That's where we want those cars to go. I would hope everybody agrees with that. I think the thing we have to think about is that, you know, I don't know anything about road planning. I do know human behavior, and I know technology. I've driven in all 50 states and multiple countries, and I can tell you that my Waze GPS will take me through any neighborhood if it will save me one minute getting there. And that's my concern, is that everybody coming out, two concerns, coming west, you know, if you look at from Watt Road to, say, Turkey Creek, what do you have? Eight, nine, 10 traffic lights if you're going down Kingston Pike to Campbell Station to get to Turkey Creek? If this road is built like it's potentially designed, it's gonna encourage faster traffic. All the apps, everything's gonna figure that out, it's gonna direct people that way. You can go from Watt Road to Turkey Creek and not hit a single traffic light until you get to Campbell Station. And it's gonna take all that traffic down Union to Smith Road, and that's gonna be the shortcut. And that's my concern, is that we're gonna, the 700 cars, that, obviously, that's a joke. I mean, you know, I could go out there with a clicker and count 700 cars before 9:00 AM just out of Fox Run. So I think when we get to 5, 6, 8, 10,000 trips a day on that road, how is anybody gonna get in and out at rush hour now that, and I wasn't part of the conversation about the roundabouts, but from what I heard, the design was potentially a large roundabout. I don't know if anybody can confirm or deny that, but just a quick question, was that, like compared to what's on McPhee Road, does anybody know, was the one that was looked at same size, bigger, smaller?
I don't know the size, it was just very over. It took up the entire entrance.
Yeah. Well, it may be worth looking at, just because my concern would be if this is built and if the traffic really increases, and if people in Saddle Ridge and/or, you know, Fox Run and potentially Ivy Farm, you know, are trapped trying to get out of their own subdivision every morning, what do you do then? I mean, you know, it takes years to then re-architect and put in a roundabout, or, you know, are you putting in stop signs? I don't know the answer, but that would be my concern, is that the increased traffic, you know, creates that problem. The other thing is going the other direction. I mean, if you think about it, the only thing that connects out to the Hardin Valley Way is Campbell Station and Everett. And so, and there's a lot of development going out down Everett all the way out into Hardin Valley. So all those people, when they want to go, if they're going anywhere east, you know, and they gotta hit Watt Road to get to the interstate, where are they gonna go? They're gonna go right down Union, you know? And so I think that's the other thing we have to think about, is traffic going both directions. I'm running out of time, so I'm gonna be quick here. I would second the thought, I think from what I've seen last year and a half tracking this issue, I felt like the only thing we've seen is a monster road to a big road. And I think that's all tied to the T-Dot money, or that's my impression. So I would encourage the town to look at, what if we went back to looking at, I don't know why we would ask the state for 10-foot lanes if that's not what we thought was the best idea to start with. So maybe look at 10-foot lanes with a four or five-foot walk path next to it, price that out, and really give the people who are in this room and have been following this the last couple of years those options, and say, "Hey, we can build this, we get the T-Dot money, and it costs the town this, or we can build this smaller version, it costs us this, and we forego the money." And so with that, I would just encourage, maybe postpone tonight's vote, get that other information so people know what they're considering, because I don't think the real options have been out there. I think it's been a monster road versus a less monster road, and nobody's ever looked at, at least not that I've heard of, here's what it would cost us to do what we think should really be in there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I live at 625 Bouchard Boulevard in Fox Run, and my family and I have lived there since, I guess it's 2007. I wasn't gonna address you tonight. By nature, I'm an observer, and as I've sat in the back and observed you listening to everyone and their stories, I first want to thank you for that. It takes a lot of hard work to listen. I appreciate the focus on safety. I run on Union Road. I run on that road multiple times a week. I use the connectivity of the greenway between Fox Run and Saddle Ridge to make a loop. I have never come home and told my wife, "Boy, guess what almost happened to me on Union Road? I've never been forced off the road. I've never had a near miss. I rarely see anybody on that road." Everett Road is a different story. My children attend Hardin Valley. They take 7:00 AM classes, they drive themselves. They have been passed on the straightaway, they have been passed in the curves. This road is overdesigned. You are opening up a problem that comes with wide lanes and thoroughfares. You can serve the needs of the people of Farragut, the residents of that area, in other ways. I encourage you, I implore you, to set aside the money and really think this through more carefully. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all, that's all I've signed up.
Okay. Is anybody on the planning commission having more questions or comments?
Well, I would like to vote on this tonight, because we can't keep on going down this road. We have decisions to make. This is not the evening to decide whether we're going to forego T-Dot funding. This is not the body that decides that. This is the planning commission. They've been charged with, from the Board of Mayor and Aldermen, to come up with a design that meets T-Dot standards and Farragut standards. The Farragut standards is for us. T-Dot requires that we at least meet their standards. So that's the discussion that we need to have tonight. We're not gonna negotiate on. We're not going to negotiate on the road width, the road design, or the, it's been indicated to us multiple times that the trail width is not negotiable. So the last thing we have to talk about is the grass strip, and I would like for us to make a decision so that they can go forward. I'm sure this discussion will be had again when construction contract comes up, but our duty here is to decide what the design is that meets the standards, that the consulting engineer needs to move forward. So that's all I'm saying.
Does anyone on the planning commission have any questions or comments? Are we ready for a motion?
I'd say we are.
I think I have a question on it. What we're talking about is, what we're talking about is basically, we want everything to stay the same, which means, one, if you want to improve the road and make it seem the same, you want to pay property tax. Two, you don't want any new development. I don't think that's a realistic outlook. It's a static town. It's going to go away and fade.
That's not necessarily what I'm hearing tonight. What I'd like, I've been a big advocate of connectivity, especially pedestrian connectivity, for a lot of times and for a lot of years trying to work through this. But what I'm hearing tonight is a resident all the way from Village Green that felt compelled to come here, because I was thinking, well, where's that drive? That's not in Fox Run or Saddle Ridge, that somebody was compelled to come here and speak before this body tonight and tell us that we've overdesigned a road. I understand that the Board of Mayor and Aldermen are the ones that actually determine how the money's spent. I don't see the harm in trying to say, well, we have a million dollars set aside for this. What could we do for a million dollars and not the $3 million or the $4 million that the total project is? And I just, I think that irrespective of how we vote tonight, I would like to see some sort of preliminary budget brought up is, can we even do anything for a million dollars? Because I don't see spending more than a million dollars, because that's basically what we've earmarked. And again, I'm going way above and beyond our duty as planning commissioners when I start talking about the dollars. But I am a citizen of this town. I'm a taxpayer of this town, and I'm very passionate about this town. I do think it does make sense to look at an alternative of what we're hearing from a lot of folks, not just folks that live on Union Road, to say, are there other alternatives that we could still get pedestrian connectivity with a road that's not, quote unquote, overdesigned?
Can I make a comment here? Because we've heard from 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13. And I appreciate that people come and they talk. But there's a lot of people I've spoken to that don't come to this meeting that are incredibly excited about having this facility. They can't wait to have, I got an email last week, can't wait to run on this trail. They're not here. They're not going to come here and tell us, give us positive feedback, one. They're not going to come here and come here and stand up there and say something that the rest of the crowd doesn't agree with. So there's a lot of voices here that aren't being heard, people that actually do run, that people that actually do walk. I reached out to one of my neighbors that walks on Everett Road all the time, and I asked him, how do you feel about this? He said, I love the separation. I like, I'm okay with the size of it. You know, they're used to the eight-foot trail. That works for them. And he really loves the separation. He says, please keep that separation in. People drive too fast on Everett Road. And that is someone who actually uses the trail and values it. I struggle with some of the people that have given us feedback, and I'm not talking about the people that live directly on Union Road. Some of these people are very removed from Union Road and don't use these facilities and don't necessarily value them, aside from Mr. Kilby, who has a complete opposite position of Mr. Sims, who is looking forward to having this. So we get lost in a small group of people, and Cynthia Gallantyne came. And I have not heard a word one from Saddle Ridge. They're concerned. They hear, it's been relayed to me, they hear that Fox Run wants to shut down Union Road, and they're not going to, this construction's not going to happen. Cynthia relayed an experience to me a couple of weeks ago where she was almost in a head-on collision. What, Fox Run is not as impacted by this because they don't drive on Union Road every day. Union Road is a dangerous road for the people coming out of Saddle Ridge and the people coming out of Sedgfield, and they are part of this community as well. And although they're not here voicing their, they have voiced it to me, there is support for having a facility, not a sidewalk, an asphalt facility that they can run on, on Union Road. And that is kind of getting lost in here. And I understand that people are emotional on both sides of this. Union Road has, for years, we've talked about needing to fix it. We can't fix it for a million dollars. That's naive to believe, that we could put in two, even two 10-foot lanes and even, even just two 10-foot lanes and no pedestrian facility. It's not possible with the egrating that has to happen. We have a roundabout coming in. They need to know where to put that roundabout. They need to know if we've got to grade it up or if it's going to stay there. We need to make a decision tonight, and then it's going to have to go to the board of Mayor and Aldermen to decide, are we going to pursue this or not? But that's not a decision for this planning commission to make. We should not be talking about the funding aspect of it. We need to talk about what the task is tonight, is this design and what we're going to do with what has been handed to us. If it were up to me, I'd have eight-foot, an eight-foot trail because I think that would be something people could maybe get on board with. But we don't have that option. To me, safety matters, and this is for a 20-year plan, long after a lot of us have left, we leave behind this road. What do we want left behind on this road that will stand the test of time and be safe, whatever that is? That's the task we have before us. I appreciate that people come out, but this is a safety issue. We have people in Saddle Ridge that, this is a safety issue, and we need to move along with fixing this. And we don't have the money to fix it ourselves.
Like Vice Mayor, I've also had calls. I get a lot of calls from folks. I get a lot of emails, and generally, I'll answer them one time, but I will not go back and forth with somebody and argue with them. And there's a group of people that want to do that, and God bless them. I hope that everything works out for them. But I had a lady call me this morning, and she did not want to mention her name because she did not want it publicized in this meeting, because she did not want to make enemies with her neighbors in Fox Run who use only 50 feet of the Union Road. This is her, not me, saying this. And, but she went on for probably 15 minutes about why we need to get this right. And I think if you look at the safety aspect, you look at, I know a lot of the folks, what they feel right now is one thing, but when you get my age and you get ready to sell your property, you need to look at what it's going to be worth and what amenities that the young folks are looking for. And I know Ms. Trout's lifing, and I know it's funny, but...
A man who lost his, a man who can't go down. I am looking at that.
We need to...
So that's just my statement. Like I said, it's, I've had numerous calls, just like what Vice Mayor Paulin has about this, from both sides. And I respect everyone's point. I listened to everyone one time, but again, I will not argue back and forth with anybody on whatever we do, okay? It's, we look at it from a lot of different reasons of why we do what we do on this particular road design. I know Noah has some concerns, and I do too, but from, as far as what a million dollars would do, I don't think I could pave Union Road for a million dollars right now with what existing size that it is. I would be hard-pressed to pave the whole road right now at the width it is for $1 million. I don't think I could do it.
And that would not be acceptable to me. I mean, pedestrian connection, a long Union Road, parallel to Union Road in some shape, fashion, or form, is important to me. Now, I'm not sure exactly what that looks like, and if we can't get anywhere near that for a million dollars, then I think that the most viable option is to embrace the T-Dot funding and figure out how to jump through their hoops. And it sounds like the staff has done a good job of jumping through their hoops, getting some variances or some exceptions when we could justify those exceptions, and then trying to figure out, okay, here's where we are tonight, is we're back to the grass strip. And I think the reality is, that's what we've been asked by the Board of Mayor and Aldermen to do, is come up with a plan. I can't call it a perfect plan. I mean, there's a lot of folks here that have very expressed their thoughts and desires that we're dealing with an imperfect plan, but I don't know how to get it any better under the circumstances that we've been dealt with. Personally, I'd like to make a motion that we approve a plan with a three-foot grass strip.
I'll second that.
The entire length, no street trees anywhere?
Well, the only place for street trees would be on the opposite side of the path. I mean, I would not advocate putting street trees within the three-foot grass strip. They will not live.
But there are some sections in here that we already have an eight-foot grass strip designed in, along the Ivy area in front of where the roundabout is. There's areas where we've fit in a grass strip.
Those areas, I would, there was a couple of, there was a couple of people that used the word retrofit tonight. And I think that's a very appropriate word. Sometimes, you just can't take a square peg and put it in a round hole. So if, obviously, the Ivy Farm, they're going to be demolishing structures and starting with a blank slate. It makes sense to widen the grass strip to eight feet there.
Okay.
Where we're impacting residents, and mostly, it is, it is the Trouts. There are some other residents.
The Deans?
The Deans. And, but where we're impacting residents, I am advocating to reduce the grass strip to three feet.
We'll need to, on the bridge, we'll need to do one or two things. If we narrow that down, we will have to put a guard rail or a barrier there on the bridge.
My, now again, I'm not sure what T-Dot's going to, if T-Dot requires a guard rail, it is what it is. Personally, even at the bridge where the strip comes or the trail comes all the way up to the curb, I'm okay without. I mean, again, I walk on Concord Road, which has a much higher speed, and I have no guard rails, and somehow, we've survived. So I think a guard rail would just ruin the look of Union Road.
All right. Well, I agree with you. Let me suggest this. Let's start at Everett Road in our drawings. We have an area where we...
Can you bring that up on the screen?
If you put that up, Mark.
Do you have the drawings with the yellow in them?
Yeah.
So we want to start at the far east end at Everett Road?
Why don't we start at the, what do you have right there?
This is starting at the west.
Well, that's Hobbs.
Yeah, this is the west.
Okay. Start from that side. Start from there because that you can go through. Then do a three feet where you see the yellow. They're trying to point us out to the yellow. That's in front of the Trout's house.
Wait a minute. I've got to figure out where we are here.
That's, this is the Trout's house.
That, you, there's the Trout's.
Part of their circle driveway. Well, they, that's part of their driveway that goes down to the lower side of their house, and then the right side of that little Y goes and connects to where the yellow kind of ends at the east end. That's the other part of their circle driveway.
So that's...
Personally, I think across all, their entire frontage, all the way to their other fence should be consistent.
So three feet?
Yes. Not just in that highlighted area, but all the way to their fence. I think it would look funny to have part of it three feet and part of it eight feet.
Well, I don't disagree with that. So to their property line.
I'm not sure where that is.
The property line, there's a driveway right there. I think that's...
I would say at least to where their pasture fence is on the east side. So that way, the whole front yard has one consistent distance from the curb.
Okay. So...
So basically, a three-foot grass strip across the Trout's frontage. Is that what your recommendation or your motion is?
Not necessarily. Their frontage also includes where their pastures are. And when I look at it, I've been out in the field looking at it, they're, I mean, all the trees along their pasture are going to get impacted. And the reality is, they would probably be impacted whether we put a 10-foot walking trail or a five-foot sidewalk. Probably going to lose those trees either way, just trying to get a road that's safe to drive on.
Well, in the grading, yes.
You can see it vividly in the area.
I'm sorry, the what?
You can see it vividly in the area.
Like on KGIS, looking at, yeah. So what I'm actually advocating is, is at least go over to where the pasture fence is and then start sliding over to be able to get something that's going to be consistent with the Ivy Farm. That way, everything in their, what's, where their front yard is mowed is one consistent distance from the back of curb.
Okay. So then you move on. That turns into the Ivy, the new property that's developing. So that's eight-foot grass strip through there.
Yes.
Through the roundabout.
Yes.
And then we come back in at the Dean property. There's a stream there. That's why that's put back of curb there, because there's a stream there, and they were trying to...
Well, and I've been told tonight that when I'm eligible to run it back to curb, is that correct?
It's not, yeah. Well, I mean, closer to the, it's not eligible, so...
So the minimum's three feet. I mean, I'd like to say, I mean, actually, technically, it's 30 inches. Let's just stick with 36 inches. These three feet is what we've been reading.
So three feet there.
Yes.
To...
Minimum.
It gives us, and that does meet their minimum.
To the, beyond the bridge.
Actually, two and a half, to make a correction, as I understood what Daryl said.
Well, I would prefer at least do three.
It's five feet, so...
Yeah, five feet counting curb and gutter, right?
Yeah.
So two and a half is curb and gutter.
Can we buy the, then it's, can we at least do three feet?
Three feet was my motion.
I have a problem with three feet. I just wanted to make the correction that that's not the absolute minimum.
Okay. And then when you move past the bridge, that is Fox Run HOA land. That's just open space until you get closer to the Blatts' house. And that's when it starts moving in to be at the corner for a crossing.
Matter of fact, I think we made a change last month that actually tightened that up that is not reflected in this plan.
No, it's not.
No.
So that crosswalk, that stays closed, and then it moves out. We are not purchasing any right-of-way from the Blatts or the...
HOA.
No, the other property owner on the other corner of, we're not purchasing right-of-way from either of them. We are purchasing right-of-way from HOA.
Now, you're talking about like the Bowles', the Bowles' property, the other, that corner?
Not Bowles', no.
Or Dean?
Not Dean. No, the two entrance houses on Fox Run.
Oh, the two entrances at Fox Run. Okay, I got you.
We have Blatts here, and we have, and I can't remember their name. Not the Kinkades, and we're not purchasing right-of-way from you. Your next-door neighbor that lives on the corner. Yes.
We're talking about the northeast corner of Rochard and Union Road.
And we're not purchasing right-of-way from them. And then we move in, and we are purchasing right-of-way from Fox Run HOA over there. That's just open space. So if we leave that in place, you can have an eight-foot grass strip there and have trees there.
Okay.
Could I ask a question then? If I'm understanding what I'm hearing you and Noah about around here, this eight tenths of a mile, segment of a Union Road, how much of it, under your discussion here, would be three foot, and how much eight foot?
Wherever it's yellow.
Do you know how much, about how much that would be? I mean, I just wonder what the, how it's going to look, you know, going in and out.
About 29% of it, is that...
Three feet, eight feet, three...
About 26% of it. About 26% plus the area where we cross the creek.
Well, I think, as I understood and as I calculated, that, and I think I heard Mrs. Trout.
She's got 26% of the entrance.
Am I right? Is 26% your frontage?
Yes.
And does that include the pasture area as well?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I calculated. 26% of that eight tenths of a mile would be the three feet under what you're discussing right now, plus some additional, right?
Well, where it crosses the, where it crosses the creek. Where across is the, where across is the creek?
The horse cross creek.
So this, I'm trying to-
Oh, the spring down the Dean's house?
The jogging, but you're going to be putting street trees in there. It gives it some character not to have it straight. It's, that's the problem with Union Road. It's a straight road.
You mean Everett Road?
It's, I mean Everett Road. It's a straight road, it's a straight grass strip, it's a straight sidewalk.
Everett Road is not a model.
I like the trail doing a little meandering.
Everett Road is not a model.
It'll be meandering and it'll, it'll provide some traffic calming and attraction in an area that we can have, we can, we can have the eight-foot grass strip and not, and, and still have some interest on that road.
Well, I agree when you're saying trees, you know, I, I guess I'm not thinking that it has to be humongous oak trees like the one in the Trout's front yard or the one in the gentleman's yard. I'm thinking more that in a three-foot area, for example, it could be shrubbery like crepe myrtle, for example, or some such, you know.
Roseanne, the challenge with that, there's a couple, there's a couple of issues.
Some smaller stuff that still-
Is you have line of sight issues. You have line of sight issues. So what we don't want to do is plant things in that three-foot strip where the Trout's can't pull out of their driveway.
And you have maintenance issues.
Right.
Well, you know, over in Turkey Creek, Noah, in Turkey Creek, they have, I don't know what the name of those trees are that are shaped, you know, cone shaped and cut off at the bottom.
Yeah?
And that improves your line of sight, you know, something of that nature to give-
Bald cypress, aren't they? Yeah, they, they cut them, they cut the underlying.
Christmas tree.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know about exactly-
But they have a raised median.
I've got one in my yard that I cut the bottom of it off because it was looking awful.
I, we don't, I wouldn't advocate putting anything in that three-foot strip other than fescue.
Yeah, and, and I heard some gentlemen talk about those Leland cypress trees, heaven forbid.
Never put those in.
Please don't. If you want to drive down Grigsby Chapel Road and look at the looks of those, which is horrendous, how they've had to shave them. I mean, it's awful looking and that's what happens to Leland cypress, or they fall. I've got them in my backyard and you know what I did? I cut all the branches off the bottom because they look dead like those on Grigsby Chapel Road. It's awful. Please don't, whoever it was-
Louise, do you want to go through with any more clarification on what my motion includes?
We needed clarity because Daryl needs clarity, so that's clarity.
Okay.
So we have a hybrid.
Yeah, you go with your motion again, so we all are well aware of what it-
You know what, I'm, I'm going to simplify the, the motion so we're not, we're not trying to figure out where we stop and start this three-foot grass strip. Based on, I'm going to say the 26% of the road frontage that abuts the, the Trout's and they're the, the only family other than the Dean's that are left on the north side of Union Road and they're also the ones that are most impacted because they get the walking trail on their side of the road. What I'm trying to do is include this in the motion so we understand that we're not doing one thing just for one person for one isolated reason. There's other things, factors that are at play here. But my motion would include that particular area, we reduce the grass strip to three feet.
And you're not talking about any other place then?
There may be some environmental challenges over at the Dean's property that has to do with a natural spring.
That'll drive-
So you're not going to limit it to that thing, is that right?
We can't just pave over a natural spring. So we may have to get creative there. I think that is still yet to be determined by the designers and the staff of, of how to deal with the walking trail at Mr. Dean's property.
Well, I, I have to, I want to second your motion, but I want to make a statement that I, I don't want to just make this motion because of just the Trout's. I want it to look good, you know, and going in and out for say a tenth of a mile for eight feet and then reducing it to three feet and so forth. Choppy, choppy, choppy. I don't think I would be in favor of that.
That's not happening.
Naturally, the land, naturally the land will, will help a lot because-
Okay, Ron, I agree with that.
It's, it's up and down, it's, it's around, it's, there's curves, there's a-
If we leave it open for the design, for the plant, the engineers or whatever to determine where the reduction is.
Well, I think the reduction is necessary at the Trout's. I've, I've looked at the Trout's front yard, they will have a bank in their front yard and the closer we can pull that walking trail up to the road, the less, the height of that bank is going to be. And obviously if the, that, when the staff is designing the layback or the, the slope easement, to be able to grade that as gently as possible so they don't have an abrupt bank next to this walking trail.
Yes, just as long as it's understood that we're not restricting them to just reduction at the Trout frontage.
Mark, are we okay on the tape? Yeah, you got about 20, 20 minutes, I guess.
Just want to make sure.
We're leaving the walking trail.
Can you add, would you be willing, Noah, to add to that motion that 26% including the Trout frontage, but not limited to that along the eight foot, eight tenths of a mile?
I will amend my motion.
Okay.
As set forward.
I'll second that.
Well, I mean-
Normally?
I don't know what that means.
You don't want to put an exact number.
I don't, I don't like that, yeah.
Well, I think the, the Trout's frontage is a three-foot grass strip and then the, what y'all showed on the Dean's, what y'all showed on that is three foot.
Yes, yes.
That's what I'm hearing, that's the simplest way to put it. I don't know about this 26% because I-
Well, we better, I'd rather not get tied into some 20%.
No, because I don't know, I don't even know if that's accurate or not.
Talking about the Dean's frontage potentially and the Trout's frontage.
The station number's off the draw. Why can't you put the station number?
Well, you could, but I mean, we know where the Trout's property lines are, so we're just, you know, that's the simple way to do it. You just do it across their, their frontage and then-
Is this going to jeopardize the-
No, no.
Walking trails, 10 feet by, T-Dot standards requires it to be 10 feet.
So that's not changing.
Would you, would you like to make a comment as, as, because you're, you and your wife are who we're talking about?
What's your coming up here? Jack Trout, 12817 Union Road. Co-conspirator, I guess. We don't, if y'all take one thing home from this tonight, we never wanted anything like this to go on about this frazzlin' road. Now, we've been there, like Charlene said, close to 50 years. When, back in 92, the town encouraged Phil Schrader to move Union Road about 100 feet to the south to junction with Fleener.
To fill in a gap, he was the developer of Saddle Ridge.
Right. So he built the, the town encouraged him to build a road, two 10-foot lanes and the six-foot sidewalk and curb like it is out in front of-
The tennis court.
Yeah, the tennis courts.
Yeah.
So we looked at that and saw, okay, that's the future. Now, Union Road's 16-foot wide. At two foot, you start, on the shoulders, you start running into trees, our fence, signs, mailboxes and everything else. So we saw that a 27-foot footprint was not going to fit in that 16-foot. We were going to lose the trees and I was going to have to move the fence. Is there any way anybody could come out and sit with, just lay out what y'all planned to do in our yard? Could the town send somebody out there and say-
Now, I saw some flags in your yard and some other flags. Were those, is that just the, what are those flags?
The right of way.
That's the edge of right of way?
That's the right of way. We asked them to bring, we asked them, the town did and they came out and spotted and I put a bunch more flags out there because we still are not willing to roll over and play dead over that 30 versus 20-foot right of way.
There's too many unanswered questions, things that have gone on in the past that we're just now finding out about.
Well, and the, the good news is there's still time with this body, we can't make decisions like that.
We understand that, we understand that.
I have a question while he's putting his thoughts together. On this three-foot green space.
Yes, ma'am.
And the 10-foot walkway.
Yes, ma'am.
Does the road as it stands right now stay in the same, will it stay in the same place?
They can't answer that.
My thought, having some background in construction, is probably the road will still stay where it shows on this plan. Now, what you mean by same place, without having somebody marking it out in the field and say, well, this is where the new edge of asphalt's going to be, I don't know. But I suspect that what we're not doing is we're not changing the alignment of the actual roadbed where you drive your car tonight. Only thing we're doing is making a recommendation to shift the walking trail closer to the road.
And there's not any way to move this project to the south and share equally right in there, especially when you have got abandoned vacant property that nobody even lives there?
Obviously, there's always a way, there's other design factors that come into play. One thing that I heard from Daryl was that those houses are uphill from the road and what you can't do is you can't give those homeowners such a steep driveway that it is, it's unfair to them, to give them, they're going to get a steeper driveway than they have now, but to give them a lot steeper driveway is unfair. So, yes, obviously, the design can be adjusted, but I think that's been vetted.
But some of those lots across from us, there aren't any houses.
There's no, there are some empty lots over there, yeah.
I mean, you're not affecting anybody.
But, well, you got a point and then they can add their driveway at a later date and decide how to tie it in at a later date. But I, but generally thinking, I think the road alignment is staying the same. Now, again, this does say preliminary, there may be other information, other unknowns that become known, that for some reason, somebody determines to say, hey, let's adjust the road alignment.
And I guess speaking from me personally, I'm disappointed that the town that I have called, the place that I've called home and the town that I have called home for all of these many years is not even receptive to listening to what I've said. It feels like every time I've talked to anybody, it has been on deaf ears. It's been a different answer to every question I've asked. I can't even get the answers to T-Dot's requirements written down. It's just somebody's saying this, somebody's saying this. Well, a spokesman for T-Dot said something totally different. So I'm looking for answers and I'm looking for written answers.
Well, you deserve answers.
Yes, I feel like we do.
I, I do think there were some things that were brought to light tonight that both Louise as well as Daryl has tried to clarify some of those things because I had concerns about that last month as well. Well, what are the minimum requirements to get this money? Because if they're, if they're two and a half feet, then I'd like to know that, but don't tell me they're five feet and we're guessed that they're six feet. So those answers are important to you, not just as a property owner, but as a citizen. We all need good information to make good decisions.
And when, when she read, what she read tonight, it even clouded my thinking even more when she read from T-Dot. So that even threw a little bit more confusion off to me.
Well, there's objective criteria and then there's subjective criteria. And some of the criteria that she read was subjective. So if they're not getting down into the empirical data of this is how you do the design, she did say, you know, obviously it is important with, in capital letters, and I can't remember exactly who said this, I have it written down, that ALL, all, everybody affected, you know, needs to be taken into account into this. And that's what we're trying to do tonight, is we're trying to come up with something that's, again, it's an imperfect plan, but we're trying to come up with something that's better, that, and is more fair. Again, it, it's not going to be something that you're going to go celebrate with. I, I can assure you, you're not going to say, well, yay, now I've got a, you know, less of a big road in my front yard. It's, you're still going to get a big road. Again, there may be some other changes that the Board and Mayor Alderman decide to do or somebody might figure out a way to make a million dollars, go further than we think and we don't need the T-Dot money. But what I'm hearing tonight and, and my experience in construction, I think the mayor's right, I think some other folks are right, that for a million bucks, we're not going to, we're just not even, we're going to get anywhere near close to what we need to do on this road.
And I guess I just, I struggle with the comment that I heard earlier when this project was designed by a commissioner and a board member, that we need to get this right and if we have to pay for it ourselves and go it alone, we will, we have the money. So I have, I struggle with that. That was an earlier comment. So I'm struggling with a lot of comments that have been made over the past two years and, and answers to some of my questions. I really am. Okay, thank you all.
Well, I can't expect y'all to walk away from four million dollars, neither, neither one of us can. Is Daryl still here?
He is.
How about if Daryl and I get together and Charlene get together one day next, or what is today, Thursday, next week and look at this and see if there's not a way we can...
Well, again, tonight, we're trying to decide six or eight feet. Is that all we're after here tonight?
Or three feet. Well, we're doing three feet, three feet and six feet and maybe-
Do you still get the T-Dot funding with the three foot?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, five, five feet total.
But it's complicated. That includes from the edge of asphalt, but when you've got a 24-inch concrete curb and gutter, you get to count that in your five. So what we're doing tonight is we're talking about the back of curb, the concrete curb to the edge of the asphalt walking trail.
Okay.
And that's what, that's, that is what, what my motion was based on and that was three feet at, at your property and at the Dean's property. And that, with the information that I have, that tells, that I'm almost at the bare minimum that T-Dot will allow and still give us the grant.
Right. But that is from the 11-foot lane, the two 11-foot lanes, you know.
Yes, yeah, we've already taken that, that's, they, T-Dot's taken that into account.
Yeah, they've okayed that, so it's-
So basically, what we've done is we've shrunk it as much as we can shrink it. I mean, technically, Roseanne's right, we could shrink another six inches out of it, but I think six inches is immaterial. But what, what I do think is important is that, is I feel like we've got enough of the safety factor that, that I would be completely comfortable walking down that or pushing a stroller or riding a bike. Again, I'm not a big bike rider and someone made a point, most bike riders riding the, the distance for bike riders, they're in the street anyway. The, the reality is, is that, is that we're trying to make an imperfect plan less imperfect.
What is the total footprint of what you're, a total footprint that you're suggesting?
Well, I can do the math. You've got a 24-inch curb on one side, I'm going to work from south to north.
Five feet, five feet.
With 22 feet of total lanes, so now we're up to 24 feet. Another two-foot curb and gutter, that's 26 feet. A three-foot grass section, that's 29 feet, plus a 10-foot walking trail, that's 39 feet. So the total of what you're going to see as far as hard surfaces excluding a little three-foot grass strip is 39 feet from edge of the walking trail to the back of the curb on the other side of the street.
I get 40.
It's going to be 40.
Would I get off somewhere?
I plus 22 plus 3 plus 10.
Yeah, where's the five?
Five feet is, curb and gutter is two and a half feet.
I thought it was a 24-inch curb and gutter, not a 30-inch curb and gutter. Oh, it's right, it's a 30-inch curb and gutter, okay. So 40 feet.
Well, if you, when y'all sent, put the information on the website, the diagram in front of our house has 21 feet of, and it's got to be negotiated or something like that where y'all have to buy, if you could bring that up.
I think I saw, I saw a cross-section.
It's, I got to turn the light on. It shows, I think, 63-foot of right of way out at the east end there at, at, across from the pilgrims.
Yes, it does.
Yeah.
And it's 33.9 going into our yard, and 21 on the other side, for a total of, what, 55? And 55 out next to the ivies. Well, our contention is, y'all have a 20-foot right-of-way. I know that's a matter of, that's a discussion for another day, but you can, if you can fit, that is 40 feet. If you take 20-foot on each side, we get, and start on, in our yard, and then go to the south, it'll fit in the 20-foot, or the 40-foot right-of-way.
The problem with that, Jack, is you would have to take that roadbed and shove it all the way to the edge of the right-of-way, which is not a good design or engineering practice. I mean, generally speaking, you, you want your roadbed to be in the middle of the right-of-way. It doesn't always work that way. And there's, and I'm sure there's plenty of parts of Union Road where the roadbed today is not in the middle of the right-of-way. But good design would dictate, and the reason being is, if you ever needed to widen that road, I don't know, for whatever, I don't know what the future in 100 years looks like, that way you can widen it evenly on both sides. And that, that's the reason why you would want your asphalt to be in the middle of the right-of-way. I understand what you're saying.
And they said me too. I don't care much about the future.
Well, I mean, I agree with you, but what I'm saying is that, that it, I understand mathematically, all 40 feet fits in a 40-foot right-of-way, but what that, what that would mean is that roadbed, the new roadbed would be shoved all the way across the street to the edge of your neighbor's right-of-way.
Well, and I would say, the driveways, because they're at an angle, they need to have a flat place to land before they pull out onto the road.
Right. You've got to be able, the departure, the departure angle and all the other engineering things that you can, but nevertheless, good design says the roadbed needs to be in the middle of the, of the road right-of-way.
You got any more questions?
So, you're, is everyone clear on Noah's motion?
Although they have to...
Is anybody unclear on my motion?
I'm not unclear.
Okay.
That's a better...
Okay.
Feet across the trouts and the deans, the pinch points, and it's how you feed the rest of the way. All right, got you.
Okay, do we have, I've got a motion and a second, and a second.
Let's see, somebody else already, Roseanne already seconded it.
I seconded it.
Okay.
Need to do a roll call?
Yeah, please.
All right. This is on your motion, Noah.
Roll call vote.
Ed needs, Ed was asking me for a clarification, and I think if, if there's any misunderstanding, I think we need to get it out in the open and make sure there is no misunderstanding. Ed, would you, would you, would you ask your question again? Because I missed a little bit of what was happening here, trying to answer your question.
Basically, I was, the question was, this motion only covers a relatively short portion of the road, and I don't exactly know what it is.
Well, my motion actually also includes the eight feet in the other areas, so I'm trying to cover 100% of the road in my motion. So, there's no misunderstandings, but basically...
Do we know where the break is?
We think we know where the break is, because we can delineate those at the property lines of the deans, as well as the trouts.
Yeah. You'll have to have a taper, you know, that...
Yeah.
You're not going to... You can't just jog it over. Nobody wants a 90-degree jog. It needs to be a taper.
So, as you get ready to approach the trouts, it'll start tapering down, from the ivy to the trout.
Okay, roll call vote.
All right, Myers?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Whiting?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Alday?
Yes.
St. Clair?
Yes.
Paulman?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed.
Okay.
Unanimous.
Thank you. And let's see, do we need to take a break, or can we go on?
Probably need to take a break.
Okay, before we go on to item number seven.
I think the bladders will be...
Yes.
I asked the board to start, what time we got to a good place.
Team meeting back to order. You want to?
I'm going to turn this over to Trevor Hobbs. He's going to do the presentation on the capital investment program. Let me pull up his slideshow here and he can go through this.
Madam Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, I appreciate this opportunity to present the town's proposed capital investment program for fiscal years 2020 through 2024. I am Trevor Hobbs, Assistant to the Town Administrator, and I'll be presenting the CIP proposal on behalf of our Town Administrator. The purpose of this business item is to present the plan and request that the Planning Commission recommend its approval to the Board of Mayor and Alderman. By way of background, the capital investment program is one of five funds in our annual operating budget. The purpose of the capital investment plan is to consolidate the acquisition, design, and construction of major capital improvements within the town. For planning purposes, we divide our CIP projects into three categories: general government projects, parks and recreation projects, and engineering projects. In order to provide for long-term project and financial planning, each year we prepare a five-year CIP that outlines the financing for projects beyond just the coming fiscal year. However, for clarity, we only allocate or budget funds one fiscal year at a time. The proposed five-year CIP includes several new projects, all of which were identified and prioritized by the Board of Mayor and Alderman during workshops held in March and April of this year. These new projects include improvements to the Campbell Station wall, replacement and repair of turf fields at Mayor Bob Leonard Park, replacement and repair of the boardwalk at Mayor Bob Leonard Park, replacement and repair of fencing at Anchor Park, resurfacing of the basketball court at Anchor Park, improvements to the restroom facility, parking, and ADA access at Anchor Park, construction of a new playground at Anchor Park, and a traffic study of Jamestown Boulevard. For fiscal year 2020, the general government projects include construction of Smith Road sidewalk, construction of the Little Turkey Creek Greenway, furnishing and equipping the community center, and improvements to the facade for the Campbell Station wall. Parks and recreation projects include the expansion of McPhee Park. Engineering projects include stormwater infrastructure improvements, improvements to Union Road, upgrades and improvements to our traffic signaling system, construction of Phase One of Virtue Road, and a traffic study of Jamestown Boulevard. In conclusion, for fiscal year 2020, the town plans approximately $21 million in infrastructure improvements. Of the total, the town will be allocating approximately $7.2 million from the general fund, $5.4 million from CIP reserves, with the remainder of funding coming from grants. The five-year CIP includes approximately $35 million in improvements. Of this total, the town will be allocating approximately $19 million with the remainder of funding coming from grants. Staff have prepared this five-year plan according to guidance received from the Board of Mayor and Alderman, and it is our opinion that the projects and budgeting reflect the town's values, goals, and objectives, and is in keeping with the adopted town policies and plans. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the five-year plan to the Farragut Board of Mayor and Alderman.
I have some questions, and I'm on the Board of Mayor and Alderman. Okay, I know we have the Anchor Park grant, and it's shown as a funding source of 325, correct?
Mm-hmm.
But I don't see the project in the fiscal year 2020. Am I getting that wrong? Is that supposed to be in there? Ron, do you know what I'm talking about?
Uh-uh.
Is it a match? Isn't that a match?
You're saying we get the money one year, but we're not spending it until 2023?
And I think we're in the middle of planning that.
Yeah, we are, yeah.
So, we're not, we're not, we're spending it now, I thought. Is what, that's what I'm asking is...
That's in design, I mean, uh...
It's not shown up in here, so I don't...
In your, in your packet, there is a two-page breakdown of the budget.
Yeah.
On the second page shows the funding sources, and there we do show the LPRF grant for Anchor Park for 2020.
But it, we don't show us spending it in, in the...
No, I, I, I'm not positive, but I don't believe, based on the, the planning and project management cycle, that it will be used in 2020.
Okay, I'll just get clarity on that.
And that's kind of part of the beauty of the five-year plan, is that the receipt of funds and the use of funds isn't always in the same year.
We have some issues with that right now. There's a, a lot of the bid work that we do on that sometimes goes through a government-based entity and, and on the labor, they think, they had a question on it. I saw that today. Sue would know more about it, but...
All right, I'll get clarity.
I'm not sure exactly what the, the problem is with it.
I know there is some delay with the, with the grant contract with the state on Anchor Park. That may have to do with that.
Okay. I have also one other thing before we move on. The funding for the Virtue Route Phase Two from the TPO, I know it's not formalized yet. It won't be formalized till after we approve this budget, but they've, they've indicated they want to move the right-of-way out a year. So, everything's, what I'm, I've spoken to Daryl about it, what we think is a good idea is to move the design and, the NEPA and the design out a year as well. So, the 330 would be in fiscal year 2022, and the 305 would be in 2023, and then the right-of-way would be in 2024. Of course, we're not entirely sure that we'll have funding for the right-of-way and construction. We'll cross our fingers and hope, but the, the tip is for 20 to, 20 to 2023. So, that, that's going to be moved out anyway. I'm just suggesting that we, we could approve it, or we can wait, and it's going to get moved out. So, I'm wondering if we should maybe, I should make that part of this motion. Do you guys understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
Okay. Yes.
I'm confident that with each, whichever motion you propose, staff will work with members of the Board of Mayor and Alderman to make changes to the CIP accordingly.
Okay with that, Daryl, what I just proposed?
Moving the design one year...
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Ron, I want a clarification of what I heard you say when we were talking about Anchor Park.
Yeah, exactly.
Sometimes do we get grant money that the expenditure of which is controlled by the agency providing the grant money, hence we don't show the expenditure on our budget? Is that what you said?
Well, what I'm...
Did I misinterpret?
Now, what I'm getting at is, a lot of times, the construction phase of it, whenever they go to fund it, if, I think in this case, we had some entity that was going to be involved in doing that, and they didn't recognize that, so they kind of give us a hiccup on it, and it'll be up to Sue to go back and explain to them what we're doing. They've got a new system. They just started this new computer system, and we get all these, these emails from them that, you know, when you start trying to deep dive into what's going on with them, then you find, what you find out is, it, it's something that a new person, it's a clerical thing with a computer, they, they don't understand what you're asking for, and Sue has had to go back and, and work on that with those folks, so...
Well, anytime you start trying to project when you're going to actually spend capital improvement money anyway, it's iffy, you know? I mean, you never know what, a lot of factors go into when you actually spend it.
Well, I think anytime you get ADA mentioned in it, then they're, they're really, they're very focused on looking at what, what they do.
I have a question. Excuse me. The Jamestown Boulevard study, what does that entail?
It'll be a traffic study.
Traffic study?
It'll be basically a study of the traffic patterns and, you know, through flow of Jamestown.
I'm a little bit involved in that, and there was, Betty, there was some hope that someday we could reduce congestion at the corner of Kingston Pike and Campbell Station, and try to make that intersection a little more pedestrian-friendly. A option that was thrown out was maybe there, there would be some way to utilize Jamestown Boulevard in mitigating some of that congestion. And I think that's where this derived from, is hey, before we can commit to anything, we really got to know what's going on at Jamestown Boulevard, what, what's there today that allows maybe some future discussions about, am I getting off base? Am I, and this is what I remember, this whole Jamestown Boulevard coming about. Is, is there any way to utilize Jamestown Boulevard in a different manner than how it's being used today? Obviously, it would take public dollars to be able to do this, but the first step was the study. And that, it was all about that intersection and trying to figure out, we don't, if you're ever walking around, that's one intersection you don't want to cross.
Well, that's also, one of the considerations is now that we're going to have the community center there, do we want a light there because of the high school?
Yeah.
I've, I found out just in passing that the middle school, they all, all schools have to have an off-campus emergency center that they can go to. And right now, the Farragut Middle School's off-campus is the Lutheran Church.
Oh, God.
But they've, yeah, the current Lutheran Church, but they've never been able to, I don't know if they ever do practice that drill, but he says we've never been able to practice that because nobody, we, we won't cross them off, across Campbell Station.
So, that, that's the other part of this Jamestown Boulevard, is, is identifying it, its eligibility for a traffic signal.
Yes.
While we're talking about traffic signals, the CMAC funding, which is a giant expense, and, and it sounds like that we're getting federal dollars for that, that's something I think that Daryl's team has worked on for a long time.
Sure.
For that, let me, would any of that, are, are we going to see any changes out in the, in, actually in the field? Or are those just changes that occur because of software and wires underground that has to do with timing?
Originally, it was, it was intended, we were, we're looking for, what can we get for the amount of money that we requested? It was $2.9 million.
Yeah.
We had in mind we could do a lot more than we could actually do.
Okay.
As it turned out, that funding level was short for, I mean, we'd love to have Cadillac.
Right.
We want to replace some of our, some of our signals and put in mast arms.
Yeah.
Some of the...
Instead of hanging on, instead of cable.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. So, when we received word a while back that we actually are getting another, a second round of CMAC funding for supplemental funding, it's another $4 million.
Right.
So, yeah, we're, we're going to be able to do everything we intended to do.
Well, there's one other thing that I'd like to throw out that we just kind of keep in mind. We started our practice a number of years ago of when we installed new signals, we're using the black poles and black mast arms.
Black mast arms.
And so, I just want to make sure that if we're replacing arms and poles, especially if we can be able to get some of the decorative arms and poles...
Anything, anything we replace is going to be...
The, the new decorative, black look that we're doing. Okay. No, that's, that's all, that's only where I was, that's the only thing I was doing with that CMAC. I just wanted to be on the record that, to make sure we get that in there.
Yeah. Unfortunately, we've put in a whole bunch of signals without, without that requirement in the past, and...
That's, well, that's, it's okay, we're, we're...
I guess we could get out there and paint them.
We, I'm not sure we want to paint them, then we're just having to repaint them every couple of years.
Paint and, and powder coating, two completely different things.
Yeah, well, especially if you try to paint galvanized, they, they don't like each other. The galvanized does not like to be painted.
Okay.
So, but my thought is, if, when we are, if we do implement some new things that we're actually going to see, other than software and timing and all these things that we don't see, that we just make sure we, we try to maintain that consistency that we've done the last few years.
Yeah, part of the ADA comes in with this program that Daryl's talking about as well.
Yeah, there's, all of our signalized intersections have, really, all of our intersections have some ADA compliance issues.
Sure.
This will cover all, all of the work that needs to be done at the signalized intersections.
Correct.
So, we'll hook up 26 intersections that way.
Okay.
Didn't we talk at one meeting about making that intersection at North Campbell Station, South Campbell Station, Kingston Pike, more pedestrian safety with an underground pass-through?
Talked about a lot of options.
We looked at doing that.
I mean, is that just fallen by the wayside?
Well, that's part of the Jamestown Boulevard study as well.
Well, the, the Jamestown Boulevard study, my intent for that, we want to look at both ends of Jamestown, look at the possibilities of, if we signalize both ends, can we justify the expense of doing all this? Is it going to pull enough of the left turn, the eastbound left turn from Kingston Pike to make a, a big difference at the Kingston Pike Campbell Station intersection? Now, one point we had in mind that we could do a symmetrical widening of Kingston Pike, add a, a second left turn lane, and reduce that queue so that, I mean, if you, if you drive by during peak hours, the left turn queue goes all the way back to...
We're still not improving pedestrian safety that way.
Right. Doesn't do a lot for pedestrian safety.
Right. But didn't we talk also about an overpass or something there near, we wouldn't be able to...
We talked about an underpass at the, at the creek, going underneath the road at the bridge.
We talked about that, and that, that project was shelved.
Over to the park.
Well, that one's not so bad. That, that...
Yeah, but I thought it might, could incorporate an overpass between maybe Jamestown and that Autumn Care place over to the park.
That would be very expensive.
Oh, no, I see what you're saying. The, what is the gentleman's name that owns that?
Not Cack Lee.
Alan, Craig Allen?
Craig Allen.
Yeah.
Thank you. When that property develops, it will be right, it will have an entrance, as it's proposed in concept at this point, should have an entrance right across from Jamestown.
Be a bridge going across the creek.
They would have to have a bridge going across the creek there. But, I mean, there's several things that could be looked at with this, this study. One thing to consider, way back in the day, originally Coles was going to relocate their entrance to be in front of, of Jamestown. I don't know, some, some of you who were on Planning Commission then, help me out, is that correct?
Well, it was, it had to do with, most of it had to do with the redevelopment of the, the Ford property.
We could actually, I mean, if this project, if this study justifies the improvements that we're talking about, we could maybe incorporate that move.
Like a roundabout there.
I mean, if we're going to signalize that intersection, if that's allowable, and again, we have to justify it to TDOT because they're, they're usually kind of leery, they want to see the actual numbers.
Sure.
To see if it's warranted. Right now, it's not warranted, there's not, there's not a whole lot of movement going on there. With the, the community center and the Campbell Station Inn property, that park and everything, I think there's going to be a lot more movement around there.
Mm-hmm.
And, of course, I'd love to have crosswalks, Kingston Pike and Campbell Station there.
What about, would, would TDOT or the state be acceptable to a roundabout at Jamestown Boulevard and Kingston Pike?
I wouldn't be.
No. I think it'd be a good idea.
I don't, and I really don't think that TDOT would, I mean...
They wouldn't go for that.
They ever allowed a, a roundabout on a, on a major state route like that?
On a major arterial, that if something happens on the interstate...
Oh, yeah, I didn't think about that. Which does about half a dozen times a year, when you start seeing all the tractor-trailers on Kingston Pike, go, well, that means I-40 shut down. Yeah.
Yeah. So, no, I...
I have another thing, to your point about the intersection of Kingston Pike and North and South Campbell Station Road, I think once we start, if, well, once we start, I'm going to say, I'm going to say that, once we start a town center, that we will need to address that intersection, and it may just be that we raise it, or that we put some different brickage in the, some kind of stamped or something in the crosswalks to delineate them, something that's going to slow down people, because you're right, that's going to turn into a walkable area. We're trying to get it, make it a walkable area now, but you take your life in your hands in that intersection.
I proposed a tunnel at one point.
And if we foresee that coming, it's better to be proactive.
Yes.
What was that, Daryl?
I proposed a tunnel at one point, but the, the property on the one corner has developed now, Starbucks, and we have a plan to put a park in where that, that would have come out of the ground at that point.
Who bought that, the filling station?
Doug Justice.
Huh?
Doug Justice.
Doug Justice.
Yeah, but he's not going to put a used car lot there, you don't have to worry about that.
Or a food truck.
Not going to ask.
Thought I'd throw that in.
Or a bank.
Back up, Trevor.
Yes.
And a bank.
He has yielded the floor back to me.
Sir, is, is that...
That concludes my presentation. I would request that the Planning Commission approve the five-year CIP for approval and to the Board of Mayor and Alderman.
One question, just a simple one. The $200,000 for the wall, is, is that a placeholder, or is that really, we got a plan that's coming to do something there?
Yes.
Now?
Where is that? I'm not sure, we haven't had that discussion yet, have we?
There has been some options discussed, some sound about some options.
We are, we can, I can say we're basically in the design phase now. We have no...
It'd be a placeholder then, but because you have...
Well, surely, we're not going to spend any more than two.
Are you designing the cost, or are you, are you going to do the estimate after you do the...
I think it'll be discussed in the next board meeting.
The board would, this, this CIP will be adopted as an official part of the budget for 2020. So, this is the estimate that the board would be operating on, and they would, you know, in, in receiving bids and proposals from designers, would look to find a bid that was under the $200,000 budget.
You answer my question. Bud McKelvey's supposed to, to present that to us at the next board meeting. He's evidently got some quotes.
Yeah.
Even some people's going to show up and talk about it, so...
You mean as far as a resolution of how to resolve it?
Got any else, any questions or comments? And a motion? Do, I guess I...
There is, there is a change, an amendment that, are you going to...
I thought I had Mick, that move to approve the CIP budget with moving the design phase, the NEPA phase and the design phase for Virtue Road, while the entire, and the right-of-way and construction all out one year.
Now, is that for Phase One and Phase Two, or just Phase Two?
Phase Two.
Two.
Phase Two, all right.
Phase Two out one year.
Yes.
All of them from 2021?
Yes.
Move all this over one year?
And so, you're going to have to reflect that in the funding as well. Actually, it's the funding that's driving the...
Yeah.
So, in other words, the 5.4 million in '24 would be in '25?
Yes. Okay. And then we'll hope that we get funding. Okay. We have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, discussion and public hearing on the proposed amendment to the Farragut zoning ordinance related to short-term rental in the town of Farragut, Applica. And we've gone over this last month, or maybe even the month before?
Wrong one, hold on.
I think, I think you all did a really good job of defining some of the things that...
Yeah. I have one thing to talk about on that, was we did provide in this ordinance some new definitions. We define short-term rental, and that's really the state's definition, short-term rental unit. And we define a bed and breakfast as we want it to apply in the town, because we want to differentiate that, because it is a permitted use in three different zoning districts. And it may be something we would want to see in a town center area. So, we do define that as we would like for it to be applied in the town. We define what a permitted and prohibited use is, just to clarify that. And, of course, we do provide for the prohibition of short-term rental units as new uses. Any that might be grandfathered would be subject to the provisions of state law. Basically, they have to be recognized as in place prior to the passage of this ordinance, and they cannot be abandoned for more than 30 months. So, we may have to...